emphasize that we're, that far from poo-pooing, you know, any of the possible ideas that have been put forth, including, you know, different kinds of surfacing materials on streets, or different machines, or water conservation measures and so on. We believe that our experts, as well as internal DWP people, will look at all of those, because questions will be posed. Did you, did you take a look at this? And what kind of conclusions did you read? So it's incumbent on us to, I think, exhaust all possibilities within reason.
Pointing to the differences in the various water being delivered to Los Angeles, and inquiring about our current water conservancy policy, District 12 Councilmember Greg Smith asks the question.
What is going on? You reported to us, and Mr. Curtis pointed out, that there's not an exorbitant number of breaks, but what the Daily News has reported out there, the nature of the breaks are different. That is, they're the larger mains, not the little eight inches that are breaking in a disproportionate number than any time in the past. So these are questions that need to be asked. We've talked about in committee, the differences of the pipe. The aging is an issue. Corrosion is an issue. We talked about the nature of the water. Where LA's water system, once upon a time, was 80% water from Northern California, nice, clean, pure water, versus 80% now, which is MWD water, higher salinity values, other, nature of what we're chlorinating, no, not chlorinating, but oxidizing water. All these issues that have changed the system, and may have an impact on the delivery of the system. And so those are the questions we were brought up in committee. The department did a very good job of answering what they could. I think it was an appropriate request of the committee, which Ms. Perry's not here today, but the request of the committee is to form this Experts Committee, Working Group, with the Dr. Gade from USC, and the gentleman from Cornell, and other experts, our city engineer, as well as your department engineers, to provide staff to come back to us in 30 days with the best analyses you can make in that timeframe, and if necessary, longer, on what is the situation? Is there an anomaly or not? Is this extraordinary event or not? And then what would be the next steps? And so that's what we've asked for. I think that's the appropriate thing to do. I would point out, and Mr. Curtis mentioned briefly, because I brought it up in committee, that in 1989, when the Cincinnati Bengals went to the Super Bowl, that on their very first timeout, most of the water mains and sewers in the city of Cincinnati exploded. And that was a function of an awful lot of people using at the same time. And so that brought into play the question about our water policy, and people using more water at the same time, and whether or not that's had an effect. And the initial response is no. I continue to think there is some connection there. And I think most people in the city think there's some connection there. So I, I want to look at those experts and your engineers when they analyze the effect of convection of over, when you're pulling a lot of water out, and all of a sudden you stop, and the pressure that would then quickly build up. In my mind, and I'm not an engineer, and I'll be the first one to say I'm wrong if I'm wrong, but that there's something going on, and that's the point. And I think it needs to be explored. And I think what the committee's asked for is the right decision. So I think we need to approve that today and go forward, and get back here in 30 days and find out what the problem is.
Continuing the water conservancy question, District 11 Councilmember Bill Rosendahl wants to know whether or not watering only two days a week is the possible reason for the water system failures.
Everybody asked me the same question, over and over, and the media's played on it, and I know you've already answered, but let's hear it again. Right now, we do watering twice a week. Some people are saying it puts the pressure on the pipes, and that has created, where some people feel a multitude of breaks that normally don't happen. True or false?
But, you know, we don't dismiss that at all. But, but what we ask is for the time to enable the experts to study it. And let us know whether there is a truth to that.
Very good. And when do you think you'll know that?
Well, we, we're going to provide the ENE committee with an update in 30 days. This was from last week. I don't know that we'll have all of the answers.
Okay, so we'll get a better understanding as the experts go through.
We'll be further along with, and we're going to be looking at a number of different theories, not just this one.
Right. Councilman, let me just respond to that. Just from an engineering perspective, what happens when that? Because you're right, there has been, I think, a lot of confusion on this issue. What we are seeing is, we are seeing fluctuations in pressure. What we are not seeing are higher pressures. We're actually seeing a dip in pressures when people are watering, but then it comes back up to the normal steady-state pressure at the upper end. So we're not seeing spikes in pressures, but we're seeing fluctuations, more on the low side than on the high side. I also wanted to point out, I had them put up a chart. This is just data. I'm not prepared necessarily to draw conclusions, but people have asked, well, what's going on? This is a six-year leak and break history by month. So that the bar on the far right-hand corner, and I know the numbers are too small to see, but it's more to look at the pattern. The bar on the far right-hand is the month of September. That's current data as of yesterday. So as you can see, we've had, in the last few months, we've had an increase, but it still is within an overall kind of normal range. It's certainly higher than we'd like to have it, but it's not unprecedented, the activity that we're seeing right now. The brown at the bottom are the more severe breaks that cause the street damage and tend to get a lot of the media attention. Again, we got an uptick on those. We're trying as quickly as possible to analyze the data and find out if there is a cause for that. But I think it's, this helps kind of put things in a longer-term perspective of what's going on.
And this is, this is why we've made the point that we get, you know, four or five breaks or leaks every single day. We get 1,400 of them a year. And that's a much better record than other American cities. And the crews get out there, and they do their work efficiently, and people don't even notice. What has happened here is that we've had two very spectacular events that occurred back-to-back. And of course, that has focused the attention of Angelenos on the issue, I think, naturally. But I hope that this graph will help L.A. concerns somewhat. That this is not in terms of the numbers unprecedented, but we do understand that people are concerned. We're not going to minimize those concerns. We're going to get down to the bottom of it and provide an explanation for the uptick that's occurred.
No, we appreciate that very much. And I still have to think of Brett Levin, who was a firefighter in Westchester, who died in an explosion as he was going into a cabinet there. And those pipes blew out, the manholes went way up, and that was a whole 'nother issue. But it's a pipe system and all of that. When you look at San Diego, they put a tax on themselves to repair and to replace their infrastructure about 10, 15 years ago. Do we need to focus on some kind of a long-term plan of replacing the old pipes and putting in new pipes? Is that part of where you want to take this? Which I hope the answer is yes.
Well, we do have a plan. We do have a pipeline replacement program, which Jim talked about, and we're going to continue that. And I think Jim's plan is for next year to replace 110,000 feet of pipe. That's 22 miles, if I... So there is ongoing work. It's been done, you know, as I say, quietly and efficiently, and it will continue to get paid.
Any other members who wish to be heard on this? If not, I think the action, should we see him file this?
Action, Mr. President, there is a recommendation on this.
Let's move to a vote, then, okay? Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that's approved. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate the time. Item 25 was a first consideration of an ordinance that would require all buildings, including single-family housing, to apply anti-graffiti coating, saying he wants to create more flexibility with property owners, and at the same time have a cleaner city. District 1 Councilmember Ed Reyes asked staff to explain the new ordinance.
This has to do with how we clean up the graffiti and all the different markings that come on buildings. And so if you could just speak to the ordinance, and what it offers, and how it'll be implemented here in the city.
Okay. Hi, my name's John Beazins. I'm with Building and Safety. And the ordinance offers an option for building owners when they construct a new building to sign an affidavit, a covenant and agreement, that they will remove any graffiti that's applied to the building within seven days of application, and creates awareness about the graffiti issues. Otherwise, there's another part that requires that they have to design the building with an anti-graffiti finish on the walls. And this is a little bit limiting to the designers, like ceramic tile or something. So they would prefer us all to have an option so that we could remove graffiti more easily.
Speaking to the amount of the fine and the timeline of payment, District 11 Councilmember Bill Rosendahl sees the ordinance as a cost-saving when it comes to removal of graffiti.
It's $550 fine, right?
Yeah, that's existing already. That's not part of this change, but yes.
But 45 days later, if they haven't removed it, they might be subject to that.
Oh, yeah, that's right. That's correct.
Okay. So when we're looking at all new design, or all new developments, they have to be sensitive to the strategy we've put forward?
That's correct.
Now, what are the environmental issues regarding this, if there are any?
We didn't find any, if anything, this option not to put the coating on would be better for the environment. There'd be less coatings put on.
So then they must realize, anybody building a new project, that they'll have the responsibility to clean up the graffiti, basically within seven days of discovering it?
That's correct.
And this coating, or this particular surface, is that easily done? Or would that require, you know, gas pains with the developer?
Well, it depends on the materials they want to use, and the types of coatings applied differently to different materials. So it's, it's a bit of a burden to the developers at this point.
And what are we going to do to inform them as they go through the Building and Safety process, through the planning process, that they must go forward with this new strategy?
As plans are submitted to Building and Safety, they are, they will be apprised of the new requirement, that they, the new option to sign the affidavit.
And by signing it, that means they take responsibility? By not signing it, that means they must go forward with it?
Correct. If they don't sign it, they have to do some type of exterior finish, like ceramic tile.
This was a motion, colleagues, by Ms. Gruehl and myself, seconding it. And the bottom line is, we spent a lot of money on graffiti removal. Wouldn't it be great if we didn't have to spend as much money in this tight budget era, but able to rely on the designers and the architects in creating the projects going forward? It's a great idea, and obviously, look for an eye vote.
Discovering that city property would be exempt from the proposed ordinance, District 4 Councilmember Tom Labange offers an amendment.
I wanted to ask a question on this here, as it relates to city property. How's it relate to city property?
This, this does not affect city property. This is for private property.
But would we have the same responsibility as the private property?
Uh, no.
But we should. So I have an amendment that the city property be the same as that. Do you have a second on that? Second by Ms. Hahn, number one. Number two, challenge to vandalism is sometimes they overtake city vehicles. Road graders, tractors, dump trucks, bins, et cetera, with city seals. I think any city vehicle should have the same requirement as this. Don't you agree, John?
Yeah, I'm sure that would be helpful.
Okay, is that in the ordinance?
No, that is not.
Okay, could I have a second to add to the ordinance? That city vehicles...
If I could just clarify, any amendments to the ordinance, they'd have to be sent back, possibly to committee and to our office to work on. So if you want to form it as a report-back motion to go through your...
I want to vote to support this, but then I want one right behind it, right behind it, because I think it's not right that we not require ourselves to say that we require the people who we represent.
So perhaps...
Thank you. Mr. Smith has a question.
Point of information, we brought this up a few years ago. Public Works agreed to do that. So all of our trucks should be painted out, and they have the yellow paint available. And if they're not doing it, just contact the supervisor of the yard where they're at and tell them to go do that. That is an instruction we gave Public Works years ago.
Expressing her concerns about the burden of graffiti removal being now placed on property owners, District 9 Councilmember Jan Perry brings up the subject of glass etching.
I understand the basis for this motion, probably as much or more than those of you as we in South L.A. suffer from an inordinate amount of graffiti and etching, which I think is the next generation of graffiti in some ways. I am a bit concerned that the burden is being put on the property owner. And I think that there will need to be some clarity or clarification at the counter as to what type of coating is appropriate, given the surface, which will probably also include windows. I have started a discussion in Public Safety Committee, now that I'm on Public Safety Committee, about the etching, to see what we can do about that. And I'll bring that forward, and maybe at some point we'll have to merge these two, or join them, or amend this later. But I just want it to be on the record that I'm concerned about placing the burden on the property owner, and I'm concerned about the types of surfaces that need to be protected, and how we communicate that to the property owner. And then number three, the issue of etching, which is just as real and just as serious as the graffiti issue. And this is a good first cut, but it's not dispositive of the issue. So I think we're going to have to come back and do further clarification in a very short period of time. So I'll be very interested in what Building and Safety has to say as people come to the counter and make comment. And I hope you'll come back. And I'll ask me to come back to Public Safety in about 60 days.
Wanting more information on the agreement that allows owners to opt out of applying the anti-graffiti coating, District 15 Councilmember Janice Hahn asks about enforcement.
So what we're doing here is amending the ordinance to allow for this opt-out clause, or to require that this coating is put on all buildings and single-family dwellings?
Currently, new buildings have this requirement. They must be built and maintained with this anti-graffiti finish, some type of anti-graffiti finish.
Okay.
What we're, what the ordinance amends is to provide an option so that they may sign this covenant and agreement in lieu of doing a graffiti-resistant finish on new buildings only.
Okay.
And existing, but currently, it only applies to commercial buildings.
And single-family dwellings?
Single-family dwellings will have to sign the covenant and agreement as well. New ones, newer.
Or put this coating on. So right now, all new buildings in the city of L.A. are required to put this coating on. How's that going so far?
Well, it's, it's going all right. In some cases, the coating has to match the surface very closely. Certain coatings work well with some surfaces and not so with other surfaces. So the industry came to us and had concerns that it wasn't working as well as they'd like, and would like to be the ones responsible for designing the buildings. And they, and this is one of the solutions we came up with.
Is this coating regularly available? Is it cost-effective? Where are we getting this coating?
From what we hear from the industry, in some cases, yes, it is, depending on what type of building materials are used, and what type of materials the coating is applied to.
So there's not just one coating that...
No, that, no, that's part of the challenge, to match the coating to the building materials in order for it to be effective.
What, and how are we defining this covenant?
This is a covenant. It's called an Anti-Graffiti Maintenance of Building Covenant and Agreement.
Right.
And it, every person that doesn't put the coating on, or, you know, the coating, the anti-graffiti finish could also be like a tile wall.
Right.
So just some impermeable finish. So this allows an exception from that if they agree to remove any graffiti within seven days.
Okay, so they either put this coating on, or they agree to remove it within seven days. What kind of enforcement do we have available to us during these budget times to actually implement this covenant?
Well, the budget's stretched thin, I'm sure, as you know. And we have a code enforcement bureau that responds to these complaints, and also refers them to Public Works Office of Community Beautification for removal of graffiti.
So that matters now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you. L.A. City View is the government-access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. You can watch city council meetings live or view past meetings by going to the city's website at lacity.org, and follow the instructions for video on demand. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And now those of you living in the Harbor area can go to the San Pedro City Hall, located at 638 South Beacon Street, Room 700 in San Pedro, and also participate in council meetings via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending October 2nd, 2009. On behalf of Lee Smith and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
I'll be home in a minute.
Well, the party's just getting started, so hurry home, honey.
I'll tell ya.
Yes, good job.
Slow down. Your family is waiting for you. Watch the road.
Volki item pickup? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall. Volki item pickup? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall. Illegal dumping? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
In the aftermath of a disaster, you may not be able to rely on your knowledge of your home. You might also not be able to rely on your guide dog. The dog may be injured, frightened, confused, panicky, and/or disoriented. Be prepared to calm your dog and to keep it confined and securely niched and/or harnessed. If you use a king, remember to keep it readily available to assist you around hazards and obstacles. Keep a spare by your bed and at all exit doors, as well as a spare leash for the dog. Ensure that your guide dog is microchipped and that their license and identification tag have current contact information. Guide dogs can accompany you to an emergency shelter. Just as you need to prepare an emergency kit for yourself, you need to have one for your dog. Ensure you have enough water, food, any medications they may require, and a first-aid kit. A blanket or rug and favorite toy may help calm them as well. Keep your veterinarian's name and number in the kit. Vaccination records may be required at the shelter. Only you know what can prepare and assist you and your family during a disaster. Are you prepared? For additional information, please contact the Department on Disability or the Emergency Management Department by calling the numbers on the screen or by dialing 311.
L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for October 6th, 2009. It is Tuesday. And I want to congratulate our Los Angeles Dodgers for clinching the pennant and for winning their division. And we're looking forward to our first game of the playoffs tomorrow against the St. Louis Cardinals. I want to thank those members of the council who are here on time pursuing the council rules. That's council members Hahn, Smith, Wesson, and Zine. Unfortunately, that's only five members. We need ten to start the meeting. Following council members are late if they will join us right away. Council members Alarcon Cardenas, Wizar, Corretts, Parks, Reyes, and Rosendahl. Ms. Perry is excused for the entire meeting, and Mr. Labons is excused to arrive late on city business today. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday in the John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall on 200 North Spring Street. If you'd like to come join us at any time, and we welcome members of the public who are here with us today. We also want to thank those viewers who are with us on Channel 35, which broadcasts the council meetings throughout the -- live, excuse me, throughout the city's cable system and also rebroadcast us each evening. We're available in two other ways. First, on the internet, you can go to la-city.org, and there you can find live streaming webcasts of our council meetings, or you can see archived footage of our past council meetings. We also have a way of getting to these council meetings via your telephone by calling 213-621-CITY. That's 213-621-CITY. That's a service called Council Phone, which allows you to listen in not just to the full council meeting, but any of our committee meetings as well. Our agendas are available online at la-city.org. They're also available in person here in council chambers or through the city clerk's office. Those are made available 72 hours in advance or 24 hours in advance for our special meetings. We also have them online with our committee meeting schedule for any of the city council committees as well, and those, of course, are open to public. If members would like to be heard on any items that are on the agenda, the agendas are written so that they're split into sections for which public hearings have been heard and items for which public hearings have not yet been heard. For those where we have heard the public hearing already, it requires a council member to reopen that in order to have a public hearing here. But for any items that have not yet had their public hearing, a card from the public will trigger that, and we will automatically be able to hear you from the podium. Or if you live closer to Van Nuys or San Pedro, you can always testify from those locations. We do take the council to -- excuse me, to Van Nuys once a month, the first Friday of the month usually. Also, we have a section of the meeting called General Public Comment. That is for items that are under the city's jurisdiction but are not on the council agenda today, and usually two minutes per speaker is afforded. And we have a timer there on the podium to help guide your comments and your time, as well as a code of conduct as well to make sure we maintain decorum in the council chambers. I want to thank again the council members who are here. Council members Hahn, Parks, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, and Zine. This is our second and second-to-last quorum call for council members Alarcon Cardenas, Wizar, Corretts, Reyes. If we fail to reach a quorum by 10:15, we will have to adjourn for lack of a quorum. Thank you, everybody, for your patience while we wait those late council members. The final quorum call for council members Alarcon Cardenas, Corretts, and Mr. Wizar is here now. Thank you. Waiting for one more council member. One more council member, excuse me, one more council member to begin. We have one more minute as a final quorum call. The sergeant, I can find someone and bring him down. Mr. Cardenas is here. Please call the quorum.
Alarcon Cardenas, Hahn, Wizar, Corretts, Labons, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present and a quorum is present.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Cardenas moves, and Mr. Rosendahl seconds. Without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right, Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Reyes seconds without objection. Those will be approved as well. Next order of business.
Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there's a flag salute.
All right. I could ask everybody, please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Cardenas, would you be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please stand, put your right hand over your heart, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. If we can run through the agenda, please.
First item on the agenda is a street lighting district notice for public hearing. Council should continue the hearing and present the ordinance on October 27th.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call that special? If not, we'll continue that to the 27th and present that for public hearing. Keep that open. Next items, please.
Items two and three are items which public hearings have been held. These are ordinances, and 12 members are expected today. Do you wish to hold these?
Yes, please. Let's hold those on the desk till we have more members.
Items four through 12 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration. Item four is also an ordinance.
All right, we have a card on seven of the other public agenda items we'll close the public hearings for. Any members wishing to call any of those special? Let's hold four on the desk. Five through 12, if nobody wished to call those special, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
On the supplemental agenda, item 13 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
We'll call that special for Mr. Rosendahl. And that will take us back to our General Public Comment.
Special, did you?
I got it for you, Mr. Rosendahl. Richard Kearns is our first speaker. He followed by Kim Neverman, and then Sky Anderson will follow. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, President Garcetti, distinguished council members. My name is -- I've given my -- copies of my prepared remarks to the clerk. My name is Richard Kearns. I'm a 58-year-old gay man living with AIDS in Los Angeles for more than 20 years, a long-term survivor and AIDS activist. I've just started a new advocacy website in cooperation with the LA City AIDS Coordinator's Office called Havoc, the HIV/AIDS volunteer virtual assisted care community. Last week, I talked with you about the comorbidities and frailties I battle as a result of not only AIDS, but the medicines that treat it without curing it. Today, I want to take that journey a little further and talk about my cognitive impairments. I am diagnosed with AIDS-related dementia. AIDS-related dementia. It's a pretty scary prospect. At its worst, at the end of 2003, when I only had 13 T-cells, which is bad, I misplaced, I lost two cars over a six-week period in a nearby shopping mall parking lot. The second was a rental car I obtained when, after the first week, I couldn't find the first. I just thought I was tired. At the same time during that period, I still made it to all my medical appointments and still helped my terminal cancer patient with whom I lived to get to her appointments, and cooked, and helped clean, and shopped for us pretty well. I know a number of persons with AIDS like myself whose dementia is in remission. And its appearance appears to be inversely related to T-cell levels, and that's what's also so unusual about all these comorbidities and frailties. They're like aging, but not exactly. It's a war that can't be won, though. I'll close with a quick story. Ted Kennedy asked Ryan White, "What can we do for you?" Ryan answered, "Help other kids." That, I believe, exemplifies the spirit of AIDS activism. Let's work together to help those who will follow. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kearns. Kim Neverman is our next speaker. After that will be Sky Anderson.
Good morning, Mr. Garcetti and council. I come to speak briefly on three topics. One is hate groups, two is waste of taxpayers' money, and three is turncoats. We in the medical marijuana movement helped to elect Carmody Tannich. He has now turned his back on us and joined this hate group called the California Narcotics Officers Association at taxpayers' expense. It's -- and the word eradication, I haven't heard that word since World War II. And it's a very hateful word. And the salaries that are being paid to whoever Maria is to take dinner reservations, to be wined and dined by an organization who wants to hurt all the medical marijuana patients in the city of LA and LA County. Also, the salaries of Mr. Bixel and Mr. Holcomb and Ms. Audrey -- Aubrey should not be paid by the taxpayers for their participation in this group. Let that group finance them. They can't even hold their water pipes together in the city of LA. What are they having, like, three a day or something? Use the taxpayers' money for that instead of trying to close down the medical marijuana dispensaries and hurting the medical marijuana patients that need it. You know, we didn't do nothing to this group here. And if they want to be haters, let them pay the expenses. And these people that are representing the city of Los Angeles there should not be paid by the taxpayers until the city can figure out how they're going to serve drinking water and running water to its residents without having pipes like popcorn poppers busting every day. And a hate group like this should not be financed by the taxpayers of the city of Los Angeles. To me, it's like DWP number two. It's called dummies wasting poor taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Sky Anderson is our next speaker. After that, we'll go to the NIs and Sean Murphy. Good morning, sir.
I'm Sky Anderson, and I live in Hollywood. First, I want to thank the city council. Sometimes I get feeling a joy what happened in this room. We have true democracy lately, like the taxi cab drivers filled this room with complaints they weren't being treated fair. The homeless filled this room with complaints they weren't being treated. And today, we have public comment as a priority. It's true democracy, and I want to thank you. I want to thank Mr. Rosendahl. He's shown true leadership ability. But this is about -- when I -- last time I was here, about two months ago, how I wrote a press release accusing Mayor Hahn of treason, and this is what it said. I accused him of the fact that homeless -- that innocent children were killed by gang members because of drugs, and he wasn't doing anything about it. And here's the press release I wrote, but I was letting Mr. Hahn know this press release is going to be issued to the media unless he did something. And shortly after that, he got rid of the police chief, and we got a new police chief which has done something about drugs and gangs. Today, it's safe to have our community who's trying to grow up then. This is about AT&amp;T, how they have literally bought the state legislature and the governor to get what they want. Literally bought it. They gave the governor half a million dollars for a charity he wants. They gave him $50,000 when he wanted to run for reelection. It's not bribery per se because they pick people who have helped them and then give them money. Any politician knows that if they want to get money from AT&amp;T, they cater to AT&amp;T, and the ATT will give them millions and millions of dollars. It's corrupt. It's corrupt. AT is corrupt. They took control of the cable away from the people of Los Angeles and gave it to the state. We no longer have public access because of AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T corrupts our politicians. Here's an article about Duval's boast -- Duval's boast about her sexual exploits with a utility lobbyist that he passed legislation on. Attorney General will look into it because he doesn't want to antagonize AT&amp;T because he knows they won't give him money, and he won't be elected. The Attorney General, as far as I'm concerned, is corrupt as the state legislature and the governor. Our governor is corrupt governor. The state legislature is corrupt, and the Attorney General, Brown, is corrupt. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Our next speaker is in Van Nuys. That's Sean Murphy, as well as the following speaker, Donna Perman, also in Van Nuys. Good morning.
Good morning, Miss -- good morning, Madam President. Good morning, Mr. President, City Council. How are you doing this morning? I hope you're not losing your voice. I'm gonna -- I'm gonna endorse Paul Pecorian for CD2. He's gonna win city councils in December 8th. I think he's gonna be a good council member. He's gonna do the job that the residents of -- we want. We want Paul Pecorian for CD2. Also, Mr. Clinton came down to the state, came down to California yesterday to endorse Merrick Gattin nuisance. I'd rather not have him as our governor. I'd rather have someone else for our governor. Also, our sinkholes are still breaking. That has to be addressed to -- there has to be addressed to -- I don't think you should pay the guy that has a full-time job. You should not -- DWP should not pay the guy. I think it's wrong, and I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Our next speaker is Donna Perman, also in Van Nuys. Then we'll come back here, Michael Hunt will be our next speaker here in council chambers.
Hello, Mr. Garcetti. Anyway, council, if you don't meet for one time because no quorum, you should happily without pay. Anyway, we're still talking furlough. It's not only an effect to nice, hard-working city employees, our civil servants. It affects the public, the ones receiving our services. It makes me mad at the public who insists on city employees have to sacrifice without asking everyone in Los Angeles to sacrifice. It's either none or all or none. If the city council can continually waste money on pet projects, the CRA, who continually misuse our money, fee waivers, special elections, then they have no right to ask city employees to give up hours, furlough hours, and the cost of living. They only gave up the cost of living for what? When they can misuse it. That's not good enough for them. If they had the DWP decide to leave, what's to stop the other city employees doing the same? Now I hear he'll be paid full-time until December. That's a slap in the face at the other city employees. Boy, that's sweet, both two salaries. And told they -- they'll just throw that money away on CRA and other redevelopment projects and other wasteful projects. The city employees who say, "No, just on the principle. We are not going to be oppressed. We won't be the whipping boy, the undervalued employee of Villa Legosa, who should leave if he doesn't like his employees. He wants them to feel in the pocket, let's cut his salary." City council, the city attorney, what half the judges pay to help Los Angeles. I saw that in the Daily News, and he has no vested -- he or she had no vested interest with the -- and the other perks of the city of Los Angeles -- city council. I don't expect much sympathy from our top revenue makers and spenders. And they get, "Oh, it'll be a CRA dream come true." Oh, so, "Oh, so nice." City employees, give them the fight them like they've never been fought before. They're the reason they're in debt, let them fall. It's the only way they'll learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perman. Mr. Hunt is our next speaker. I would ask, it would be my strong preference that you move your shirt, Mr. Hunt, since it has had a disruptive effect in the past. If you decide to keep that on today, that is your call, and I will have to watch carefully what sort of disruption that it affects. I would warn you again, in terms of the camera angles and different places that you sit in order to be seen with your shirt, it does have a disruptive effect on the other speakers and our ability to listen and watch them. So, again, it would be my strong preference if you take that off. So, again, it would be my strong preference if you take that off. Again, it's your call today. Mr. Hunt.
Again, thank you for letting me keep on my T-shirt. This is a First Amendment privilege. It's Cohen versus the city, or Cohen versus California allows me to keep it on. I don't think that the shirt is a threat. I'm protesting—
I'll just pause you right there for a second, just because we want to establish the record on that. You can express yourself using hateful racial speech. You can as well, using swear words as well, but you do not have the right to disrupt the council meeting, and if it has a disruptive effect—we do, under our rules of decorum and under First Amendment, Supreme Court, state Supreme Court law, as well, have the ability to monitor that and to ask that that be removed. But just want to make sure that's in the record. Please continue.
Okay, and I'm glad that's on the record, because here, again, I'm in protest. My friend Matt Dow got thrown out for saying the very same thing that he felt, using it as an action, which was discrimination. And the reason why they're probably using a wide angle on me, because they discriminate because I'm African-American. Free speech comes in many different ways, and a lot of people on this council committee probably directly reflects this T-shirt, so they feel—they feel opposed to it. So anyways, with that, the laws that I'm here for is the 4215. It's still unconstitutional, as—as—as very well as the 2008 laws that the city made the same mistake. I will—I will continually protest with the shirt. I don't think the shirt can cause a problem. Like I said, I don't know what a disruptive effect is. It's—in—in Cohen versus the—the state of California, the shirt couldn't have made any difference, because a guy wore in court and—in the courthouse and was upheld by the Supreme Court. So I just want to emphasize, you guys—you guys all know who I am. This is a racist, racist council. If they don't give me the same priorities they give me everybody else, I'm not being disruptive. My behavior—my behavior is not disruptive, nor is my T-shirt. It's just the way I feel, so I'm expressing myself, and I'm going to keep it like that. Thank you. My name is Michael Hunt.
Thank you. Just since it was also alluded to in earlier—I was not on the chair, but in earlier expulsion of another member. Persons addressing the council shall not make personal impertinent, unduly repetitive slanderous profane remarks utter loud threatening personal or abusive language, nor engage in other disorderly conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impede the orderly council—sorry, conduct of any council meeting. And it was under those circumstances. Not any word—a word by itself, it's correct. You cannot kick somebody out on, but it's also whether it's abusive. Michael Carrion is our next speaker. After that is Armando Herman, and after that is Rick Nightengale out in Van Nuys. Good morning, Mr. Carrion.
Morning. My name is Michael Carrion. Once again, I'm here about some property that still today hasn't been cleaned. Last Friday, I was here—here, Mr. Reyes was—make comments about me being unstable. He's right, I am unstable when it comes to my community being ignored. He says I'm upset. I'm not upset—if you excuse the expression—I'm mad as hell. Confused. He says that I'm confused. What Mr. Reyes does not want to tell his staff is not that I am not confused, but that his colleague's office was confused. I brought this to Mr. Weisler's office for the past three years, and they were under the impression that it was in their office in their district. But Mr. Reyes does not want to say anything about his colleagues. Mr. Reyes wants to put the finger on somebody else, just for the record. I was not confused. I took it to the right people. I thought they had it under control. They didn't. Those people are no longer working for Mr. Weisler. Thank you, Mr. Weisler. Once Mr. Weisler found out it wasn't his, he gave it to Mr. Reyes's office. Mr. Reyes's office was contacted and did not call me back. Mr. Reyes made a few statements, that he has all these conversations on recording. Maybe the city attorney can answer this. If Mr. Reyes has these recordings—I want them, because he illegally recorded my conversation without my permission. That is a federal law. The city attorney should be able to address this. Mr. Reyes made these statements right here in this city council. If they are recording my conversation without letting me know prior to that that they are recording them, it is against the law. And if Mr. Reyes has them, then bring them, show them. Every time I finish talking, Mr. Reyes comes back with X, Y, and Z. All I've asked is for Mr. Reyes to call me and come speak to me personally.
Thank you, Mr. Carrion. What I heard was that he had recorded that you had called, not that he recorded the call. That's what I heard him state. Mr. Armando Herman is our next speaker, and then Rick Nightengale will follow in Van
Councilmen, good morning. Accusation is a charge of wrongdoing against a person or persons, a risk distinctively associated with a particular type odious—ODI—OUS, detestable, scandal, disgrace, and more so incompetent persons or persons that are guilty beyond a reasonable doubt for misconduct, as we overheard, for conspiracies in the statement of saying, "The city departments hate you, Mr. Herman." This act is to commit a lawful act of unlawful means in violation of Code of Ethics. Sorry to say that, Mr. Weisler, CD 14. Use of confidential information. Persons in the public service shall not disclose confidential information acquired by the available—acquired by or available to them in the course of their employment with the city, or use for such information for speculation. This might reasonably be interpreted as an act of violence to influence the intent of interfering with public interests, dealing with the city's concerns and matters of interest, as I have done and made recommendations. Our goal is in the interest of fundamental fairness in local government and CD 14. Take, for example, Andrew Adelman, Department of LADBS, who abused his position as a general manager. Should the city have allowed him to retire so he can benefit from it, or be fired for the wrongdoing? My own interest is only in the wrongdoing. When a person has done wrong and deliberately abused a woman, for whatever reason and purpose, is wrong. I have children, you have children. Think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Nightengale is our next speaker in Van Nuys. Good morning, Mr. Nightengale.
Yeah, Rick Nightengale. I'll tell you, I wish the news would still get on the CRA. I'd like to know all the people that get the money. I'd like to know where the money goes and how much is there. I don't understand why the city and you people don't get up and just ask these questions and demand these questions. There is a lot of money sitting there, and we would like to know where it is, how it goes, and how much. Because every time you—everybody brings up, it's money in the CRA, and how much is there? Because when there's that much there and nobody wants to let knows who it is, there's—there's corruption, far as I'm concerned. Same thing as in the city attorney. You council people could have settled the whole thing for Lindy Grue. Then you turn around and won't settle it, and you want it to go on and on and on, and then you turn around and says, "We don't want to pay a lawyer," but you're going to have to use one of the city attorney's lawyer. That's like putting the—the fox in the hen house. Would you want to have them support—to—to defend you when you're suing them? Or you want to go into their private papers? I mean, let's get serious. I mean, come on. She is—she's doing her job. She's following—she's—that's the person that's supposed to check up on you people, for us. That's what it's all about. Now why don't you let it happen? Because you know that—I'm sorry, there's corruption there. When somebody says no to somebody like that, there's corruption. If not, then let them in there. It's just their job. So you turn around and says, "Well, we're going to put you in the office, but we're not going to let you do your job." But you'll let them come after us, and you'll come after the normal person that lives in the city. When we do something wrong, well, here they come, man. You'll grab us, and you'll take us and demand everything. It's just not fair. And I think from Michael Hunt, hey, I'm telling you, you're a disgrace, and you'll bring this, uh, uh—oh, God, I don't even want to mention it all. You're—you're just a fool. Thank you.
All right. That will close our general public comment. If we can, please remind folks to make unduly personal remarks. We will now go to the items that were called special. We do have a couple ordinances now with 12 members here that we can take up items two, three, and four. We can please prepare the roll on those and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
That is approved. We next have item seven, and then we'll take up item 13 right after that. Donna Perman in Van Nuys is our next speaker. Ms. Perman, on item number seven, Donna, number seven.
Number seven, thank you. It's—sorry, I'm late.
It's okay.
It's not so much a particular fee—anyway, for number seven, it's not so much a particular fee waiver, it's the principle of fee waivers. How can you find a way—that city employees must find a way to save money for the city while the city spends on fee waivers. Yes, we suffer, Rome burns, city council and the mayor plays the fiddle. On Friday, we spent over $30,000. Today, it's over $13,000. One day last week, it was over $63,000. See, it really adds up. We can't afford for the city to continue paying these fee waivers. Some of these are good events, because Sukh events—I like those. But I feel it's a good time to allow others to donate and could get, uh, get write-offs. That way, we can still have some of these events. I'm not asking for to get rid of all fee waiver events, just another way to spend, to fund these events. And I don't believe we need any block parties. I believe that's a way for certain people in the block to be, uh, not invited. Anyway, as long as you ask the city employees to concede, then we can't ask for these fee waivers. As long as you say, "Let's only take off a couple hours per week while you don't get paid, while everything else is going up," then we don't have a right to do fee waivers. And as long as we don't want to give their full overtime, the ones and—for the holidays, whatever you want to make them make concessions on, giving up cost of living increases while everything else is going up. And my friend, she can't afford to pay for her cat, because that's going to make it a lot harder, because now you want to take money out of her pocketbook. And as long as the city council makes, uh, still gets overpaid, then no fee waivers. That's what we say. We can't afford any fee waivers. We're going to have to cut these all in half. How about that? That's what we should do. Thank you.
Mr. Michael Carrion is our next speaker on item number seven here in council chambers. We'll go back to Van Nuys, and Rick Nightengale will follow after that. Good morning, again.
Morning. Special waivers. I'm under the impression that all these things have to be done ahead of time. Apparently not. On item C, you have a triathlon for Kaiser Permanente that was done on the 4th, October 4th. Yet today's the 6th, and you have no dollar amount on here. How would—how do you guys vote on these things? Is it $1? $1,000? Did it cost a million dollars? The city's broke, and you guys are bringing things to us after the fact, and then you want to pass them with no dollar amount on them. Now I know why the city's broke. Because you don't know what you're spending. You're authorizing money to be spent with no amount on it. Does somebody go to Kaiser Permanente and tell them to service our children for free? Because they don't have the money? They come to you and tell you to put on their little parades for free, and you say, "Don't worry about it. We don't care what it costs. We'll do it." This is one of the reasons why the city's bankrupt, or on the way to bankruptcy. You guys do not get dollar signs before you approve stuff. Then you approve them late. $2,000, $6,000 for an annual Fiesta. Mr. Reyes, again. If the city's bankrupt, postpone some of these Fiesta's. Put them off until the city's financially able to pay for these things? I can't understand how a bunch of people get together and have a party, and we're broke. I'm not saying cancel them altogether. Put them off until the city's back up on their feet. We're spending millions and millions of dollars over the years, and then you come and you want to raise the taxes. You want to raise trash fees. You want to raise this. Then you got the mayor hiring police officers and laying off others. I just can't understand that.
Thank you, Mr. Carrion. Our next speaker is Rick Nightengale in Van Nuys.
Yeah, Rick Nightengale. I'll tell you, like—to like everybody has said here about the fee waivers. I don't mind turning around and helping a brand-new group turn around, and I believe this is what fee waivers were for, when you waiver it, is when a new group starts to—a—a new event, and the event needs help, I go along with helping them. Maybe not at this particular time, because everybody's broke, but that's what it's for. It's for people to turn around and help somebody get on their feet, to turn around and have an activity. But to adopt them and pay it from year to year to year? No. If they can't make it pay in the long run, then they're doing something wrong, and they turn around and have to reorganize and get it right. But for you people to keep picking it up, day after day and year after year, that's crazy. You're showing that you still don't know what you're doing, because that's not what it's designed for. Especially for these high-dollar ones, when I like to, uh, uh, when you—when you get in the Kodak Theater and that stuff, and Staples Center. Give me a break, man. They have so much money. If they can't, then they have no business being in business. This is what it's all about. You're supposed to be saving money, but every one of you people have a pet peeve, and everybody follows the pet peeve. You do it for me, I do it for you. Well, how about doing it for us? The people that pay the money in. And do something for us to turn around and organize something to save some money. Because every time we turn around, you are spending money. You don't put on events. You don't turn around and do things like that, because that costs money, and you can be paying the bills. The knowing—the thing is, is you got to pay your bills, because you keep saying we're broke, but you're—you're figuring other ways to charge us, to turn around and pay the bills, but then you really don't save, except, "Well, we'll just turn around and lay people off or get furloughs." That's not going to cut it. You got to cut it at the belt where you're saving money and letting people spend the money you don't have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nightengale. And just for folks who may be following for this for the first time, there is a new special events policy that is coming into effect this month, that not only draws greater reimbursement, but also the private reimbursement for all the private ones that are done, and a full reimbursement for some of the others as well. That will result in these motions no longer coming before the city council, but also savings in the somewhere between $5 and $10 million this year under a tough budget year. So thank you, everybody, for your input on that. If we can, please open the roll on the special event motions that are before us. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
That is approved. We'll go to item 13 next, and I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number 13, folks, has to do with a new ordinance that's in place that makes it a fine, a potential, actually, prison sentence for dog walkers who bring in more than three dogs into a park. If I could real quickly have Wreckin' Park come up and Animal Services and the city attorney for just a quick second. But, Mr. President, I've been talking with them out there, and what we're going to do once we understand what the law is that's now in place, is going to be my suggestion to my colleagues that we put a moratorium on the whole thing, send it to the Animal Service Commission, and then go through the Public Safety Committee. So we have an open discussion through the process, and I also have a few suggestions of what we should be looking at when we go forward. So, good morning. Good morning. Who wants to speak first? General Service or Wreckin' Park?
Good morning, Councilmember.
Or or Animal Service. Go ahead.
Yeah, Linda Barth from Animal Services. We're here today. We certainly support rules and regulations at Dog Parks and throughout the city that the city that help reinforce our licensing regulations. And I know that the new rules promulgated by the Wrekin Parks Board require that dogs in dog parks be licensed, which is great, whether they're city-licensed or if they're from another city, they'd be licensed to that local jurisdiction. But I think the specific rules that relate to how many dogs are located or allowed to be in the park relate to rules that are promulgated for control within the parks. And the Wrekin Parks Board undertook to set those rules up based on, authority allowed them in the ordinance, which I'm sure Wrekin Parks can speak to. In the city of Los Angeles, there is a limit of three dogs, that a person can only own three dogs or three cats, but there's no specific, that doesn't necessarily relate to how many dogs might be walked by someone or out in a dog park, as long as they're under a leash. But that's really our only role in this.
Thank you.
Good morning, Councilmembers. Kevin Regan with the Department of Recreation and Parks. The only comment I would make about the motion is that the rule of three dogs is really there for the, for safety and protection of both the public and other dogs. When individuals bring more than three dogs to a dog park, it's very difficult for those folks to keep those dogs under control. Even when a dog is running free in a dog park, there's a certain amount of control that the dog needs to be under. Sometimes, when there's too many dogs with one person, it's a little bit hard for those people to control the animals, and that was the, really, the genesis of these rules.
And what are the rules?
Well, the rules regarding the three dogs is that any person that's going to come to the dog park can bring no more than the three dogs. And one of the big, the other parts is, has to talk about how folks utilize the park. Many times, individuals have, don't obey the leash law by the time they park and then walk to the park, so rules are also reinforcing established leash law rules between the time of individual parks gets to, within the dog park, and then takes their dog off-leash. Those are really, and also that dogs, another big component of that, of these particular rules is that dogs that come to public dog parks within the city of Los Angeles have to be licensed.
Okay. Now, what is the fine and what is the penalties with this existing law?
I'm sorry, Councilman, I don't have the answer to that. Fine, do you know what the fine is?
Well, let me say what I know, real quickly, and tell me if I'm wrong. I have office hours, as do all my colleagues, open to constituents. I had a dozen folks come by last Thursday, and they told me there was a law in effect that said if they went into the park with more than three dogs, that they could conceivably be fined a thousand dollars, is the figure I heard, and could actually be incarcerated up to six months with a prison term.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mike Shaw with Planning and Construction of Recreation and Parks. Councilman, I'm not, the dog parks are established by ordinance. The locations of those dog parks are established by ordinance. As far as the rules are, I mean, they're all policies within the Recreation and Parks Department. I just was going through them, and I don't see anything in here about our policies about the number of dogs, or the fine, or, we tried to consult with the city attorney prior to coming down here, but we were unable to get any advice from them. But we could certainly report back on that, but I'm not aware of such fines.
Okay, thank you for that. City Attorney, would you come on up, Mr. Brown, and tell us what the city attorney's view of this situation is?
Yes, Councilmember. Good morning. The dog parks have rules, and the rules pursuant to the municipal code have been given the force of law. So, yes, a violation of a dog park rule would be the same as violating a municipal code provision.
Okay, all right. Do you know it's a thousand dollars?
Generally speaking, yes. Generally, violations of municipal code ordinances unless they specify otherwise are up to a thousand-dollar fine, up to six months.
Okay, up to a thousand-dollar fine and six months incarcerated for bringing more than three dogs, if you are a dog walker into the park, is now in effect. Well, this was brought to my attention, colleagues, last Thursday in office hours. I did a Rule 16, so we could discuss it today. I've also talked with Mr. Smith about what procedure should we follow. So, we're going to hear from some of the folks here. Would all those folks that are here on this issue please stand up? Well, as you can see, there are a lot of folks here that are here with great earnest. And, Mr. President, if I could, the first five cards there, I'd like to let them come up. The fifth card is Ed Asner. They put them in order and ask those five to come up. We do ten minutes of public hearing, and then we continue the discussion.
Mr. Rosendahl, since we haven't had a public hearing under the State Brown Act, everybody who wants to speak can speak today, up to twenty minutes total, at our discretion. So, I can call folks up, two minutes at a time initially. If folks do want to speak, you know, you absolutely can, feel free to. I think you hear the direction that we're headed, so feel free not to speak as well, but just do let us know who does want to. We have probably about an hour and twenty minutes' worth of cards here, I think, if everybody does speak, though. So, I will go through each name individually, and, go ahead, you can sit down. But thank you all for standing up. Mr. Cardenas, do you want to say something on that?
How long are we giving for public comment on this item?
As per recommendation from the city attorney, it's usually maximum, you know, twenty minutes is the minimum that we need to do for our Brown Act requirement.
But there will be other public comment opportunities, because this is going back to committee.
This will go to committee for the nuances, but for today, we'll do at least twenty minutes, if folks want to, if folks...
Do you mind, Mr. Rosendahl, since it's going to go back to committee, and there will be opportunity for public comment, and if we limit it to twenty minutes? Okay, thank you.
All right. So, our first speaker is Heather Mickelson. And if there's somebody else who you collectively think is a better spokesperson, because other people are not going to speak, feel free to just let me know, or Mr. Rosendahl know who that is. But Heather Mickelson's our first speaker, and then Leslie Campbell will follow after that.
Before Heather speaks, I want you to know that Heather, folks, came into my office with a delegation of folks, and that's how I first became aware of it. And in my conversations with her, I was wondering how we could do it in twenty minutes. She suggested the first five first, and then we go from there. And if more want to speak, great, whatever we need to do. Sir, ma'am, you're up.
Thank you.
Sorry, one last moment. Yes, Mr. Carets?
Could you just ask everyone in the chambers to be a little quieter? Because I'm slightly hard of hearing, so when everyone's talking, I can't do that.
Behind Mr. Carets and others, to please take their conversations behind council chambers, so that we can hear all of the conversation. Thank you. Go ahead, please.
We would first like to thank the council for addressing this matter so swiftly. We would also like to express our deepest appreciation to Representative Rosendahl for sponsoring this amendment. We respect your service to animal... We respect your service to animals and are grateful for your concern for our small businesses. Thank you to councilmembers Carets, Smith, Han, and Reyes for their support on this motion also. We are proud to be small business owners, surviving during this difficult economic time, but councilmembers, we are scared. Here we are, just trying to provide a valuable service, take care of our clients, and make a living, but now we have to be afraid of facing jail time and steep fines. We need your help. We have a lot of very concerned colleagues waiting to hear we received your vote today. We also have many concerned clients hoping your vote is yes, so they can have the peace of mind knowing their pets will still be taken care of. This amendment requires only modest changes to the existing ordinance, to include off-peak hours from nine AM to six PM, Monday through Friday, where there would not be a limit to the number of dogs an individual may bring into the dog park at one time. We feel this is a win-win scenario. We can still make a living, and our clients can be assured their pets will still be exercised, socialized, and loved. Individual dog owners will still have play buddies for their dogs, and the parks will still be kept safe, clean, and enjoyable. The city will continue to receive revenues from dog licenses, business licenses, and taxes. The only responsible vote today is a yes vote. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you very much. Leslie Campbell is our next speaker. After Ms. Campbell will be Michael Luckerman.
Good morning, councilmembers. I'm Leslie Campbell, owner of We Let the Dogs Out in Pacific Palisades, and seventy percent of my business is providing dog park services. When the general manager of Wrexon Parks said this amendment would help provide safer, cleaner, and more enjoyable dog parks, he couldn't have been more wrong. We are the ones that provide this to the parks. We walk the parameters, cleaning after our own dogs and others. We make financial contributions toward the maintenance of the parks, and we supply them with scoopers and baggies. When it comes to safety, we are trained professionals who know how to properly and safely stop the scuffles and incidents that happen in the park. Many of these incidents occur because individual dog owners are not sure how to handle their pets' behavioral issues, and in these cases, we gladly step in with free training and advice. Our responsible, as responsible pet care providers, we screen our clients and tend to bring only happy, healthy, and well-socialized, licensed dogs to the parks. In turn, many individual dog owners come to the parks specifically because we are there so that their own dogs may learn appropriate socializing skills. We definitely make the parks a better place, and we do this because we love the animals and want to continue to provide quality services for our valuable clients. We are simply seeking an amicable solution, and personally, I just want to go to work every day without risking going to jail and being fined. Thank you for your time and a yes vote.
Thank you very much. Michael Luckerman will be next. After Mr. Luckerman will be Kim Hoover. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Good morning, councilmembers. Thank you for hearing us. My name is Michael Luckerman, as you've just heard. I'm the owner of Wag Dog Walking Service. I live in Tarzana. My clients live throughout the valley and throughout the west side, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about our relationship to our clients. Many of our clients, most of our clients, work very long hours. Some are elderly, some are handicapped, some are rich, some are not so rich. Without our services, a lot of them would not be able to own their beloved animals. They rely on us to provide their dogs with exercise, socialization, training, and a little love, too. Without us, dogs might be tearing up their homes, they might be barking excessively, bothering neighbors, they might become aggressive because of lack of socialization and training. And just to speak on behalf of our clients, they're hard-working, tax-paying citizens who pay to have their pets licensed. They can afford and they deserve to have their pets taken care of by us as qualified professionals. And without this relationship, there'd be a lot more dogs that have to go to shelters, taking up taxpayer money, and even, God forbid, a lot more euthanasia of these animals. And the rescue organizations, which a lot of us here volunteer for, might become inundated with more dogs, and we don't want this. We are in business to make a living, yes, but not only that, we want to say that we're in business because we love these animals as well. And as a personal note, I'd like to say that I support the leash laws and the license laws as well, but I cannot support the three-dog rule. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kim Hoover is our next speaker. After Ms. Hoover is Edward Asner. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm a little nervous. I'm a dog owner, I come here...
Can you get a little closer to the microphone? We can hear you a little better. There you go. Thank you.
Hi, I'm a dog owner. I represent other dog owners who use dog walking services. I have a rescue dog who came to me with a lot of issues, and I think if I didn't have a dog walker to take my dog every day, she probably wouldn't be with me today. I'd have to have given her up. She enjoys going to the dog park every day, she has a great life, she has a better life than me. So, I hope that you'll support this and you'll do away with this law. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good job. Ed Asner is our next speaker. And after Mr. Asner will be Nancy Gankos. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, sir. Mr. President, members of the council, it's a pleasure to participate in this democratic exercise, which is primarily to obviate an undemocratic procedure, such as the regulation to be enforced on the dog parks. I am not a dog walker, I probably could use one to take me to the park, but I probably would get in the way of the routine of dogs. I think that this is a phenomenal exercise by these people. It's a wonderful occupation. I've seen the results, I've been in the dog parks and have noticed the policing by the handlers and the effect they have on other dogs. To regulate and punish them at this point in time, with the economic circumstances we now live with, is to create unemployment, drive these people to other occupations if they can find them, because you cannot exist as a dog walker in this city without using the parks. I know of no human park which is limited to three people. And I would... But the dog parks, it's standing room only, anyway. I think that it's, this new regulation strikes me as slipping the Patriot Act through Congress quickly, and I would hope that your diligent efforts will obviate this silly act. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Asner. Our next speaker is Nancy Gankos. And after that will be Linda Nowickow.
Hi, councilmembers. Thank you so much for this opportunity, Mr. Rosendahl. Sincerely, from all my clients, I'm very impressed that this came to council so quickly, so thank you. I reside in Glendale in the Rancho district. I work on the west side primarily with clients there. Animals have always been my passion, all animals, and this wonderful city enables me to make a living caring for people's animals. It humbles me, I'm not a vet, I didn't go to medical school, but I can provide loving care for animals. And, you know, these pups that we take out, that all of us walkers take out, are extensions of these people's families. To many of them, they are considered their children, and I can relate to this, having my own pets, and that's my family. These families, again, I can relate to, work, many of them work a minimum of eight hours a day. Through commute times, work up to ten and twelve hours, I can relate to that as well. It's a long day, it's too long for these animals to sit inside, therefore, they enable us, they provide, we provide the service, and they have the need to get their pets out. Whoever established the three-dog rule, I don't know if they're familiar working with dogs. I hear it all the time, I can barely work with one, let alone, you know, a higher number, but it is relative. We are trained, we have been doing this for years, we love and respect these animals, and we care for them appropriately, especially during this difficult economic time, when so many animals are being relinquished into shelters. It is humbling to hear that people are not joining effort and trying to make use of the parks and promoting use of the parks and facilitating the use of these parks that are originally made for dogs. We aren't taking these puffs to people's parks and encroaching on their property, these are specific parks for dogs. Thank you very much, council.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Linda Nowickow is our next speaker. After that is Linda York. Is there a Linda Nowickow or Nowickow? Excuse me for mispronouncing it, I'm sure I did. And then after that is Linda York.
Mr. Garcetti, thank you for allowing us to talk, especially Councilman Rosendahl. I'm very nervous.
Don't worry.
I just want to say, I'm a mom and I've got kids, and I've got a dog walking service that I've had for many, many years. I've got a lot of clients. We all intend to, Councilman Rosendahl, for allowing us to have this meeting. Please, say yes to this. We provide a fantastic service, we clean up the dog parks, we enable people to, that don't know about dogs, to introduce them to the dog park, we show them around the dog park. We are an asset to the community that we work for. All my clients are in Marina Del Rey in Venice, so we'd be very appreciative if you would vote yes on this.
Thank you very much, Linda. Linda York is our next speaker. After Linda York will be Mary Jones. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Linda York. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak today. I am an animal owner, and if I didn't have a dog walker in my life, like the lady who was just talking before me, I would find it impossible to work and help take care of my granddaughter and my mother, and know that my pet, who I love dearly, is being well taken care of and being taken out. I also have to say that the people that take care of these animals for us are very, very special. When I recently was laid off from my job, being able to pay to have a dog walker, in many cases, is a luxury, but it's something you choose to pay for, and you give up other things in order to make sure that your pet is taken care of. When I was laid off from my job, my dog walker didn't miss a beat. She said, don't worry, Linda, it's more important that the dog is taken care of and that you're put to my, your rest is, your mind is put to rest so you can concentrate on finding a new job. So, I support anyone who does this work, and I think the three-dog rule is something that is very arbitrary and does not need to be in effect. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mary Jones. After Ms. Jones will be Danielle Kraus. Good morning.
Good morning, thank you.
Would you move the microphone down a little bit? You could just tilt it down. There you go, perfect.
I'm not a dog walker, my name is Mary Jones. I'm here to support the dog walkers. I specifically go to the... I specifically go to the dog park when they are there because I know my dog is safe because they're knowledgeable about dog's behavior. I really hope you vote yes for us and help us out. It's a great service they provide, not only to their clients, but to other people there at the dog park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Danielle Kraus is our next speaker. After that is Chris Franciosa.
Hello. Good morning. My name's Danielle Kraus, and I own a dog care business called Ruas Armine, which services clients from Santa Monica, Venice, Marina Del Rey, and Mar Vista. I also work for the independent Labrador Retriever Rescue of Southern California-- I'm sorry-- that has rescued and rehomed 185 labs in 2009 alone. I personally have fostered 26 of these dogs myself, and all of these dogs come directly from the L.A. shelters or owner turn-ins that would dump these dogs and end up in the shelter if we didn't take them. Many of these dogs are under socialized and in need of training and rehabilitation in order to be reintroduced successfully into a permanent new home. If I were not able to bring these rescues to the park and socialize them with my own well-trained pack, these dogs would not find homes and would be returned to us if they did. Currently this year, we've only had one dog come back to us, and after further working with him, he now has a permanent home. This dog, along with many others from the rescue, are among my clients who come to the park in small playgroups so they can get the exercise they need while their owners are at work. Actually, 95% of my clients are rescue dogs, most of them from L.A. shelters, and without my services, many of these dogs will get turned back directly into L.A. shelter system, which we all know is already very, very overwhelmed. I have a couple of statistics I've been asked to read, so I'm going to read you a couple of stats and quotes. This is from the L.A. Animal Services 208 Statistical Report. Pets are clearly the silent victims of the ongoing economic crisis. Los Angeles Animal Services began to experience this crisis in January 2008 with a sudden 20% increase in impounds. We ended the year with a 20.5% increase, meaning that 54,991 dogs and cats were taken in. In 2008, the city of L.A. euthanized five dogs or cats for every thousand residents. For 2008, euthanasia rate for dogs and cats rose 30% to 2007, and 19,000 dogs and cats were euthanized in 2008.
Thank you. If I can ask you--
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Appreciate your comments. Chris Franciosa, or Franciosa, and then Chris Lahoda.
Hi, everybody. Thank you, councilmembers. My name is Chris Franciosa. I run a business called Wheezy's Walkies. I'm the definition of a small business owner because it's me and me only, but it's very important to me. I'm just going to continue with some of these statistics real quick. The National Council on Pet Population Studies says over 56% of dogs and puppies entering shelters are killed. The Humane Society says that five-- wow, five billion cats and dogs are killed in shelters every year. Is that possible? That's possible. That's one every six and a half seconds. Animal welfare expenditures are approximately $2,400,000 per year. The FriendsOfCulverCityAnimals.org says 85,975 animals are impounded from the L.A. County Department of Animal Care. Out of those, almost 86,000 animals, they killed 17,000 or dogs. The American Veterinary Medical Association says that 63% of all households in the U.S. own a pet, and there are more than 2.6 million privately-owned dogs and cats in L.A. County. So those statistics are pretty substantial. And just on a personal note, I have moved recently from Councilman Rosendahl's district to Councilman Smith's district, and I was lucky enough to be able to buy a house in today's economy. And I am the only breadwinner for my family. I have a three-year-old son and a one-month-old son. It's been a stressful month for me, but this has just raised my stress level so much, because if this law stays, I will not be able to provide for my family. And I'm so proud to be able to be a homeowner and to be able to pay those taxes, property taxes, income taxes, that go right to the city. And without that, that would not be possible. And I just thank you so much for hearing us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chris. Chris Lahoda is our next speaker.
Hi, good morning. Thank you, councilmembers and the president. I'm a client of a dog walker and very thankful of their service. And I guess the one thing I wanted to make clear is of 15 years of my own self going to dog parks with two and three dogs of my own, every dog walker I've ever seen at the park has always contributed something to the park, and they've always been very, very courteous and very, very helpful, as someone said earlier, to other dog owners to help them with their dogs. But basically, just to let you know that they really do add to the dog park, and thank you.
Thank you. Brandy Friedlander is next. Brandy Friedlander?
Forgive my shaky voice. My name's Brandy Friedlander. I live and work in Brentwood, and I support the dog walkers, and I go to the dog parks specifically when they're going to be there. Thank you.
Thank you. C. Hearn will be, I think, our last speaker. We have about 17 seconds left of the 20 minutes.
I'm not a dog walker. I'm not a client, but I know these people. I also go to the park at that time. Dog walkers got me my first foster dog. I'm now on foster dogs four and five, and these people have trained me in how to keep a dog and how to do it well. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to read into the record to make sure everybody's names are recorded today as well. The other speakers that we didn't get a chance to get to today, Greg Jones, Suzanne Henry, Robin Jonas, Sean Murphy, Ross Levy, Kelly Levy, Hillary Rosen, Lorian Leggett, Jonathan Corbett, K.T. Mahoney, Pat Galveney, Debbie Johnson, Donna Pearman, and Leanne Hasty. With that returned, we have Mr. Rosendahl. Did you want to make any other comments? Mr. Keretz and Mr. Cardenas are on the queue. Do you want to--
I'd be happy for them to speak before I--
Okay. Well, we go to Mr. Keretz next, and then we'll hear Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I have a very unique perspective on this issue in a quirky circumstance. In addition to having a dog for 16 years, which occasionally I took to a dog park, that's not the circumstance, but when I ran for a city council, because I'm an animal person, I've done a lot of animal legislation, I decided I would gather a lot of my signatures at dog parks. So without a dog to distract me, I actually spent somewhere between 10 and 20 hours at dog parks getting signatures. And what I saw was essentially a big party, sometimes dozens, sometimes 50, sometimes 100 dogs in a dog park, just having a great time. Never saw one dog fight during that whole period. These dogs are the ones that are socialized, and they're socialized because they go in groups and they play all day. And I had a lot of fun. I played with a lot of these dogs while I was there. I won't claim I spent all my time gathering signatures, but it was just a lot of fun. And people would come with six dogs, they'd come with eight dogs to walk them, and it was just so much the better. It wasn't a problem. And I watched it for long enough. I didn't go there intending to observe dog behavior. This issue happens to have come up, and I happen to have done it. But there's, I mean, you can't be there for 15 hours, whatever it was, and not see something wrong if something was going wrong. It's not. This is working out perfectly fine. Enforcing the three-dog rule makes absolutely no sense. It gives you absolutely nothing except causes economic distress to some of the folks that are here. The dogs have a great time. The people have a great time. So what's the downside? Why are we trying to regulate something that doesn't need regulation? I strongly support-- I didn't even know this was an issue till Bill brought it to me, but when I heard about it, I said, "I want to co-author this in whatever way and help whatever way I can." It makes so much sense. This is just the biggest no-brainer I've ever seen. So let's pass this item, and let's cut out this nonsense. And it makes sense to regulate most of the things that we regulate, but this is absolutely not among them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Keretz. Mr. Cardenas is our next speaker. Mr. Cardenas?
I love dogs too, but I need to ask the department. We just had a council member say that, you know, you go to these dog parks, there's no fights, there's nothing wrong or what have you. Do we ever have incidents reported to us, or did our staff at the parks witness or see where dogs get into fights or, you know, things of that nature? My time, please.
Yes.
Yes? I know you're being politically correct. Now I'm going to have to ask you another question. Is it like once a year, twice a year, dozens of times across the city, tens of times? And this is going to go to committee, but be prepared to have the information--
And I think that that's fair enough. We would be happy to put together any statistics that we could come up with based on reports and give those numbers in committee. I will say that the department works very hard to provide these dog parks to the public throughout the city, well-established, well-used, great facilities, a great place for people to exercise their dogs, a great place for folks to come and meet each other and characterize as a great place to have fun with other folks and dogs. They are all that. However, the fact of the matter is that on the other side of the argument, there are members of the public who use dog parks who are unhappy with some of the dog walker numbers that come into the park. And the fact of the matter is that there have been incidents in parks of dog fights. There have been incidents in dog parks of dog fights that lead to fights amongst people.
Where it leads to fights among human beings, the two-legged mammals walking around?
The two-legged kind. And there are also incidents of dogs even being killed. The reason that a number of years ago, the Department of Recreation and Parks instituted another rule, and that rule was to protect small and timid dogs. So like not all dogs that go to a dog park, even if they're big, should be out running around with the general larger dogs. So we created a smaller timid dog areas, and there are rules about what types of dogs can go into those areas. Now, the intent of the commission was not to regulate the community's use of these dog parks. The intent of the commission was to make these dog parks as safe and usable as possible. I respect all the speakers that came up, and they all spoke about their businesses, how professional, how well-trained they are. I don't doubt any of that, and I'm not calling any of that into question. But I will say that there have been cases of individuals who bring a large number of dogs to a dog park and do not control them--
Just let them run around?
And allow them to run around.
Kind of like a bunch of kids over at the McDonald's playground or something?
I'm sorry, but--
Is that like a bunch of kids at a McDonald's playground where parents are ignoring them and just letting them do whatever they want?
And not to make light of it, because, you know, it is a serious thing when dogs are not under control. And sometimes that happens in the parking lot, where we had incidents of individuals driving up in a vehicle, opening the door, and the dogs are not even on leash from the car to the facility. Then they're running around the parking lot. There's been biting situations there. Once a dog gets into the dog park, there's also, even though you're in a dog park and the dogs can run free, and some of these parks are quite large, you know, but individuals that bring a dog to a dog park have to still be able to control the dog in case of some type of an incident. If you have seven, eight, nine, 10, or more dogs under your control, it's very difficult for one person to control that many dogs. The intent of the number--
Hold on, ladies and gentlemen. Hold on. Let me help you clarify something. Did you say it's impossible, or did you say it's very difficult--
I said it was very difficult.
--for some people, right? For some people. Some people are awesome at it, and some people are extremely responsible. But unfortunately, the department and all of our dog parks aren't the dog parks that only you visit. We're talking about how many visits a year can we round it off to the nearest 1,000 or 10,000 visits to our dog parks throughout the city?
I mean, multiple thou-- I mean, thousands.
Thousands upon thousands of visits, okay? So in that demographic, we're going to have people who need to have perhaps better rules and regulations, because they're not as good as the best or the most responsible or the most adherent public people of the public, right? We have a city of how many people? It's 4 million people? Okay. So, look, this is going to go to committee, so I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands, I support this motion, Mr. Keretz and Mr. Rosendahl. I support it 100%, but I do-- I do have an amendment that I hope you'll accept, and basically, the amendment adheres to, it's called Amendment 13A, adheres to not hindering this motion at all, but just adding to it so that what we can do, we can take these two parks that are in this motion, and we can allow this to happen with the proper going forward, and so that we, we, the human beings, control ourselves and not allow us three years for us to evaluate what's going on, hear your feedback. I love your volunteerism and all the things that has been said here about all the donations and picking up other people's dogs' poop and all that stuff. That's wonderful. So with that energy and synergy, if you will help us as a city learn how to expand this beyond these two parks responsibly, after a three-year evaluation of these two parks, then I think we could probably expand it to all dog parks throughout the city. So once again, ladies and gentlemen, my amendment does not affect your motion. Your motion is addressing two dog parks, one at Griffith Park Dog Park and Whitnall Off-leash Dog Park. Those two parks, I'm sorry, that's what the motion says, not my motion. Please, Mr. Rosendahl or Mr. Keretz, can you please clarify what the original motion is? Because my understanding, the motion pertains to two parks.
Let me just say this, first of all, it's your common bond-- So let's wish him a happy birthday, Tommy. That's why he got the hug. From what I'm able to surmise, there was a motion that the council, two members of the council, put forward to talk about licensing dogs, and it evolved out of Wreckon Park into what became law by all of us. It was not the motion itself that suggested it, and we, as a council, 13 out of 15 voted in favor of this back last year, almost a year ago.
No, my question, I'm sorry, my question, Bill, to you again--
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mr. President, is it's my understanding that the motion that's before us, your motion without my amendment, pertains to two specific parks. It says Griffith Park Dog Park and Whitnall Off-leash Dog Park.
That's what it originally said, but no, we were told to write it that way because that's how it originally was written. It's for all dog parks.
So your motion is for all dog parks?
Correct. Yes.
So I withdraw my motion, and I'm asking the department, both departments, to be prepared to address, I'll give you a copy of my motion that I just withdrew, to prepare yourselves to answer those questions, hopefully in committees. I don't think I'm on the committees that this is going to go through. If you can answer those questions through the committees, if you can meet with my staff in my office while it's going through the process, so we don't have a big blow-up on the council if we're trying to push something forward that is not well-prepared. Ladies and gentlemen, this is for the safety of the people who are unlike you and don't know how to follow rules, et cetera, aren't as good as you are to handle five and 10 and 20 dogs. I know a guy who can handle 70 dogs. I witnessed it myself, all under control, no fights or what have you. It can be done, but not everybody has the kind of energy and self-respect for themselves and their animals and respect for others to do that, and that's who we're having to deal with in our parks sometimes. So I withdraw my motion. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes is our next speaker.
In this dialogue, when we look at possible solutions, I know it's going to go to committee, but are we going to have an opportunity to discuss physical layouts, looking at how we design these facilities so that the folks that Councilman Cardenas is referring to, who do not have the skill set, who do not have the wherewithal to handle more than three dogs, so that we can separate if that works? I'm not saying it has to be done, but are we going to look at how we can create that synergy and maybe work with local neighborhood councils, local advocates that embrace this notion of making it better for dogs to look at the physical layout of a park or a facility to enhance safety? Is that something that we are willing to entertain in this process, or is it already built into what we're doing? built into what we're doing?
I, I think we'd be, we'd be...
Before my time.
The department would be happy to report to the council anything that you would like us to discuss. However, um, I think that for safety, in terms of, if we're looking, if we're thinking strictly of safety of the dog parks, we have looked, the department has looked at the safety and the layout of the depart, dog parks already. Uh, one of the things I just mentioned that we have done is created the small and timid areas in most of the dog parks. We've also looked at the types of gates, uh, the types of watering, uh, facilities. Um, Mike Shaw from our Planning and Construction section is here, would you like to add on anything? We do have a policy about how dog parks are to be built and developed, so we could certainly discuss those with...
And I know this is very intensive, but in the changes you recommended, the physical layout, did we get feedbacks from the customers, our bosses, who are gonna use this facility?
Sure, and I think that's, that's all, I mean, improvement of park facilities is something that we're always open to looking at. Obviously, we have to always consider, uh, budgetary issues as well, and, and if there's any capital improvements, how do we fund those? But the department's always willing to look at how to make facilities better, there's no, we're, we're, we'll always be open to those comments.
Sir?
Uh, Mike Shaw, Threken Parks. I think the best thing that we can do is, because the, the current, um, uh, board motion or the board actions, as well as the ordinance, do define, um, the design criteria for dog parks, I think the best thing that we could do is just maybe start, if, if this does go to committee, is start outlining that to kind of re, you know, re-educate everybody on what those are. I have not personally heard back on anything wrong with those, other than that, you know, there are a lot of desire across the city for dog parks. Um, and there are only, you know, a few licensed ones under this current ordinance. So, I mean, I would be prepared to come back at committee to, to go over what the existing design criteria is, and how that, you know, how dog parks are actually, do become licensed in the city. Um, because there are some things in here that, um, that I've been discussing with many communities across the city that are problematic for dog parks being created.
And, Mr. Shaw, thanks to your hard work and Recreation and Parks, we do have, along with partnership with the state, sending you acres of park space in my district, the old rail yards. But I don't think any of it incorporates a dog park.
That's correct.
And so, we have this need. Uh, the dog park that's closest to me is up on, uh, Royal Seco, which is in another district. Uh, the areas that are park poor, we don't have enough park space for people, let alone dogs. But it doesn't mean we should ignore that need.
That's right.
Uh, so will this give us the opportunity to address that creativity?
I actually would hope it does, because it, like I said, it's been an issue that, that's been, um, becoming a, uh, pretty significant issue with Recreation and Parks, you know, across the city, because there is, there is that challenge to meet both the needs of the people and the children, as, as well as the people with dogs. And it's, it's a tough issue to, to, to address, um, being that we are park poor. Um, but I certainly think that now's the time to, to talk about it and, and see how we go forward.
Can you report back, given the instructions that are currently being entertained, I'd like to propose a friendly amendment, and, and asking, what is the standard, what is considered a small dog park versus a bigger one? What's, what are our models like, what are our case examples like? So we can at least start that dialogue to see where they can fit. Uh, we do have areas, if we were creative, uh, looking at underused land, city land that's not active at this time, could they fulfill that role on interim basis? So trying to get creative with what we do have might lend itself to great opportunities for these uses. But if we understood that scale, I think that would help us out a lot. Appreciate your hard work.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Alacon is our next speaker, and then Ms. Hahn.
Where, where did the three-dog rule limit come from?
Uh, it came from a Recreation and Parks Commission action. It came from a Department of Recreation Commission action, which actually created a set of rules for, uniformly to apply to all dog parks, until that particular action, which, I can't, I don't remember exactly when it went into effect, but it was several months ago, that particular action, there was different rules at different dog parks within the city. Um, and, and many of those rules were simply department rules or guidelines that weren't enforceable by ordinance. So the, uh, Commission action that included the, the rule for three dogs allowed the, the rules that had been approved by the, um, the Recreation Parks Commission to actually be enforceable under the ordinance that, uh, pertains to dog parks.
I'm just trying to get at, who picked the number three? I mean, what, what's the magic behind the number three?
The number three, it came from discussions with, um, department staff, park rangers, Office of Public Safety, uh, Animal Services, other groups that, um, gave some input, and, and other cities, we did some research, and it determined that the number three was a, a number that was easily controllable by... You wanna add to that?
Yes.
Mark Brown's gonna add to that.
Yes, if I could just say also, I would, I remember those discussions, and, um, one of the points was that, um, there's a limit in, uh, the municipal code as to how many dogs an individual can own and keep at their house. There, there's a zoning requirement that three dogs is the maximum.
I don't think people can hear you.
There's a, I'm sorry, there's a zoning requirement, um, that three dogs is the maximum that you can own and keep at your house. So I think that also was one of the considerations in coming to this room.
Okay, well, that would be an indication to me that there really is no method, it's sort of arbitrary, it's tied to the number of dogs one can own. Um, this is a, it's, it's, it's an interesting issue. I have to tell you, you know, you, you are wonderful people, thank you for loving animals, thank you for taking care of animals, but there's one side of me that says, why don't these owners get off the butt and walk their own dog? You know, I mean, I just think that if you're gonna own a dog, you ought to be able to walk it, and, and, and if you can't, then you shouldn't. But, that being said, our, our busy society can't, can't handle it, and everybody wants to have their dog every, you know, so they can look at it five minutes a day, and then they, uh, send him out for a walk with somebody else. Um, but, but that, that's the scenario. In this particular case, I don't understand what the magic of three is. Were there, uh, there were incidents before, before the number came up, or there were incidents after the number was enforced?
Meaning, uh...
You, you mentioned a, a number of incidents, people...
Sure.
First of all, if you let your dog loose in the park, from the parking lot, you've already violated the law.
Correct.
So, this isn't gonna change that. If, if you do that, whether, even if it's one dog, you've already violated the law. So there's, there's nothing in this, this new proposed, uh, ordinance that's gonna change that. But, so, were there violations after, were there violations before, when were these things happening?
Well, I would say, to answer your question, the problem was individuals who bring large number of dogs to a dog park, let's remember that these dog parks are...
No, but wait, I just wanna know, was it before the three-dog limit, or was it after? Are they still bringing large numbers of dogs?
People still do it, and, and if they do it now, then they are, they, they are, there is enforcement ability. I mean, I'm sure it's still happening, I don't have statistics on that, we can certainly...
And so, how many people have, uh, been unsafe as a result of, uh, these violations? Has anybody been bitten?
I've spoke generically that people, people do get bitten at dog parks, dogs get bitten at dog parks, but I don't have those numbers.
I've served on council for, for this, in this iteration, a couple and a half, a couple of years and a half, and I don't remember any lawsuits related to people being bitten at a dog park. And I guarantee you, if somebody gets bitten at a dog park, they're gonna sue us. So is it, is it not happening, or? And you said there were fights between individuals, were there police reports tied to these fights? I mean, where, where are we getting this? I, 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 maybe a lot of this is anecdotal, word of mouth, but this is their livelihood. And I think we owe them the respect to, to, to present more than anecdotal information.
Correct.
So has anybody been sued as a result of a problem at the dog park related to too many dogs being handled by one person?
We'd be happy to put those, that, that information together and report back.
Well, Mark, I mean, you would know, I mean, has anybody been sued? I mean, have we been sued as a city?
I might not know, but, uh, to the extent that I do know, a lot of these, um, situations result in private lawsuits between individuals and their...
Ah, come on! The lawyer, you're a lawyer, you know you're gonna go after the city if it happens in a dog park.
I, I can't give you numbers of dog...
Okay, okay.
I, I can't give you numbers of dog cases today, but we'll...
Any lawyer that doesn't recommend that doesn't know what they're doing. But, um, but I haven't heard of any cases, I can't believe that any of this is really happening. So I think the problem that we're, we're trying to solve is not there. And so, I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem testing, testing this, and, and, and seeing if we can stretch it a little bit. Um, I also wanna mention that one of the reasons that, that there was a cap probably had something to do with equity, in the sense that, that we want little kids to take their one dog to the dog park and enjoy their time, but if there's high concentrations of dogs, because a few individuals are taking a bunch of dogs, then it, it may impede the number of individual dogs that are, are able to use the facility, so it's sort of an equity issue as well. But, but I see no reason why we shouldn't test this, I, I know we're talking about off-peak hours and, and all of that, and I think that might work, because I think most of the dog walkers don't walk, uh, you know, during peak hours, they're walking during the middle of the day. And, and, so I think we can work this out, but, but I just wanted to raise a couple of issues, 'cause I, I think sometimes we, we, we let anecdotes lead our lives, and we really have to dig deeper and, and find out what the real problem is, and, and therefore find the right answer. I think we can do something here, and, and I'm willing to support, uh, the direction that we're moving in. I, I just wanted the department to think of it in, in a different light. If we're not getting sued, if we're not, uh, seeing police actions at these parks related to, uh, person-on-person, uh, violence, if we're, if we're, you know, there may be some degradation of the parks that, that, that we've experienced, but we need to know that, I haven't seen anything other than anecdotal comments, then, then let's, let's push the limit. Uh, where, where people are struggling to find jobs, maybe, maybe we can expand a few jobs out there by stretching this out a little bit. Uh, but I do recognize that at some point, it, it's gonna break down. I agree with you on that. I, I don't think anybody should be walking with a dozen dogs on a leash. Um, and I think we need more guidance as to what that magic number is gonna be, but I don't think three is the magic number. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn is next, and then Mr. Coretts for a second time, and then Mr. Rosendahl for a second time. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sitting here thinking, Must Love Dogs, one of my favorite movies, I'm thinking, who let the dogs out? I'm thinking, Three Dog Night, it's all, uh, it's all coming to me. But I'm standing up today to support this idea, it absolutely makes sense, uh, to not limit, uh, people to three dogs, uh, at our dog parks. My thing with our dog parks is, I want them to be used, I want them to be enjoyed! I think the saddest thing is when you drive by a dog park and no one's using it. I would much rather see more dogs, uh, enjoying our dog parks than not enough. And I think our, our problem, uh, with, with determining who gets aggressive, or where the problems are, it's maybe not necessarily the dog walkers that bring, uh, the majority of dogs. I had a chihuahua, one little teeny, tiny, trawny chihuahua, uh, named Chiquita, who, uh, I took one time to an off-leash park, and it was a disaster. This dog, you know, attacked everybody. So, uh, you know, and I, and I, that was one, one person with one small dog. So I, I think to just put a blame on people just necessarily because they, uh, the dog walkers who are trained, who know what they're doing, uh, as being the, sort of the source of problems, just because they bring more than one dog, I think is, is really not fair. So I'm in, in favor of this, I think it makes sense, we wanna encourage people who have these kind of jobs, and we wanna encourage them to, to use our dog parks. In the harbor area, as you know, we've worked a long time to try to find another place where we can build an off-leash dog park, so that's still what, uh, I'd much rather you take your resources and try to find more places to expand off-leash dog parks, than, you know, going around trying to cite and spend our resources ticketing people, uh, for bringing more than one dog. I, I, it just doesn't make sense. What I, what I will ask, though, is, is there, I know we have signs at most of dog parks that say, you know, no aggressive dogs, which I should've known better before taking Chiquita there, but I only did it once, I never did it again. What, what other mechanism do we have for, uh, people to call, to report if there is a problem? Uh, because, again, I'm, I'm more concerned there, if there is a problem, then we need to help deal with it, but what mechanisms do we have, uh, or is it pretty much self, self-policed at these off-leash dog parks? Is there, is there a 1-800 number that people call if there's a problem? How do people get relief if there seems to be, uh, aggressive dogs? And not necessarily attributed to dog walkers, but any aggressive dog that's kind of ruins the experience for everybody.
Right, so to answer that question, we do have, uh, rules posted at the dog parks. Um, there are signs also posted at the dog parks, depending on the location, that gives the number of either the Office of Public Safety or the Park Rangers where, um, problems can be reported. There are a couple of dog parks in the system where we actually have Wreckon Parks employees at the dog park. One of those is in the, uh, Sepulveda Basin in the San Fernando Valley, we actually have a Wreckon Parks employee that stays there during, uh, most of the, uh, busy hours to kind of help regulate, 'cause that's a very large park and it does need a little bit of extra. But most of the parks are self-regulated.
Right.
And so there's kind of, it's just like, there, there becomes kind of a, a community of folks that frequent the park, and they, they really kind of self-regulate, so, yeah.
Right, well, I, I'm in favor of this, I think it makes sense, I think dog people are wonderful people, uh, and I, I think we should do everything we can in this tough economy to provide more opportunities for people, whether it's recreational or it's part of their job. This is what we're about, we're about parks and recreation. Let's provide as much as we can for the most people. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, we have Mr. Labans for the first time.
Thank you very much. Uh, good morning again. On this issue here, do you see the list of all the dog parks in the city? You have this list?
Uh, my...
And as park managers, do you see any differences? Would you say the Whittnall Highway Dog Park, or the, uh, Griffith Park Dog Park is different than the Runyon Canyon Dog Park?
Well, I think all the facilities are unique, they are unique, they're not, there's not a cookie cutter design for...
Okay, so you're gonna study that and make recommendations as we move forward?
Well, I'd ask Mike to, to respond on that.
The, the, the largest, um, difference between all of them is, uh, the size.
Is the size.
Is the size.
Right.
Some are multiple acres, some are not, so there's, um, there's some small, some are very large.
One of the challenges, I just wanna say, and I support dogs, I wanna give a shout-out to Dexter, that's our dog right there. But, uh, in, in one particular park...
Is Dexter watching us, Mr. Labans?
Dexter does watch it, he does, yeah. Channel 35. In one particular park, because there's no parking, there's a mass of dogs. Dogs do defecate, and sometimes they defecate on their way to the park, or they, what's the proper term, is that an okay term, Mr. City Attorney? I won't get violated for that?
That, we, we rule from the chair, that's okay.
Is urinate okay? Also, there's some problems with some of the storm drains because of heavy concentration of a natural act of an animal. Uh, okay, so there's a key aspect of that, which I think has to just be looked into. I also believe, Mr. Reagan, that when people come to use our parks, just like Janet said, I'm for using them. When people come to do yoga in parks, and maybe there's one little yoga leader, I'm for that person to do it. When people come to train, uh, in any, to run across the country in Griffith Park on the ridges, I'm for that too. I don't want impediment. Safety's very important, but I think there's a way this is evolving in our city, whether we have the emergence of the bicycle community, we also have the emergency, I don't wanna call you a dog community, but the emergence of dog owners. 'Cause even on, and I got a problem with this a little, on Largemont, how many have been to Largemont out there? On Largemont, a lot more dogs, and maybe more so in Brentwood, I don't know, I don't go to Brentwood too often, Mr. Rosendahl. I went the other day on the art show, uh, it was beautiful on Savasini, but the dogs accompany the people to the street, and the sidewalk is only so wide, and sometimes there's some problem with passage for people who are just there. All these things can be worked out and should be worked out, 'cause I think, as others said too, when dogs are with other dogs, they are usually good dogs, you know, in that sense, they're not the, the hostile ones. So the only thing I wanted to ask, Mr. Smith, and I came over to your podium to ask you, and your deputy said hello, so I hope he still has a job tomorrow. We have a joy... We have a joint hearing on this in the Parks Committee, so we solve all the parks' challenges. So we make sure we meet the objectives of the Park Department, but also meet the objectives of those who desire to walk dogs. There's someone who-- you know, whether or not they're professional or not, they're people, and they take care for other dogs. I bet you, everybody, if they had the time in this crazy world, would love to have the time to just be able to stroll with their dog, but they don't, so they have someone who walks their dog. That's not a sin. That's good for the dog. That's bad for the person. I wish the person had more time, but that's beyond our regulatory control. So I look for the opportunity to have a real good discussion. I hope you have statistics there, because it's real important to have statistics so council members can make the right decisions, and everybody try to win this for the parks, win this for the dogs, and win this for the people. And another shout out to Dexter. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Mr. Caretz, and then Mr. Rosendahl take it home.
Well, just a few thoughts over the course of this discussion. One is, it's rare that we have this many dog walkers in one place, so we do have a chance to get out a message. The one problem I have heard, which I think is legitimate, is sometimes people will come with a load of dogs in their car. They'll just let them all out loose and let them run into the dog park. So if we can ask you all to get the word out to everyone that does this, to make sure and keep your dogs on leash till they actually get out in the park, you guys together could easily solve one problem. The idea of humans getting in fights-- I mean, the fact is, when my daughter was a little kid soccer-playing age, one of our friends, who was a petite five-foot woman, almost got assaulted and battered by a six-foot-two, very beefy man who was unhappy that her-- his kid wasn't playing enough. So we're not going to stop playing soccer in our fields because occasionally adults can't be adults. But I don't think it's any more likely to be the folks that bring dogs to walk to be more antisocial. If anything, it's the opposite. And certainly, their dogs are less likely to engage in any dogfighting behavior, because these are the ones that are socialized. They come to the parks all the time. The other good idea I heard, and I don't think it's present in all the parks, is the idea of having a set aside in every dog park for small and timid dogs. I don't think we have that in every place now. That would actually be a really good idea. So that's something I think very positive that could come of this discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Caretz. We just did that at the Silver Lake Dog Park and expanded the small dog area very successfully, so that's definitely been a very good success. Mr. Labange, and then Mr. Rosendahl take it home. Just a brief question.
I'm for all people. We're a county of 88 cities, but are we going to have a strict law that says if you're not a city resident, you can't-- a dog can't come in, or what's our objective?
We're not taking that policy, and we won't take that policy. People who walk the dogs should be able to bring them dogs to our park. That's a real sense of community.
What about the licensing issue there?
Yeah, the licensing issue is--
Under current law, they do have to be licensed.
They have to be licensed.
Okay, good. So if a Burbank dog walks into Whittenhall Highway and he has a license, that's okay, but if he doesn't have a license, it's not okay?
You've got to have a license. That's the law.
Whether it's a Burbank dog, a Burbank license, or a Santa Monica license, or a West Hollywood--
A dog has to have a license.
Right. Do West Hollywood have dog licenses? Yeah, okay, good.
Yes, they do.
Thank you. Okay, good. Thank you. Just as a clarification--
Mr. Rosendahl.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank you, colleagues, for all your comments on this issue, and I especially want to thank the folks who came here to make the democracy work today. Here's the story. Many of us, as we know, as we move forward in this council, it was basically staff that came up with some of these penalty rules, went through a commission, and it ended up before us an action was taken. But wasn't for the citizens coming to my office last Thursday, we wouldn't be in this process today. So that is the democracy at its best. And if I could ask Mr. Brown to make a quick comment from a legal perspective before I do the final wrap-up. Please.
Yes, just the ordinance, the way it's written right now-- I mean, the motion, the way it's written right now directs us to amend the ordinance, which may not be necessary. The ordinance enables the enforcement of rules, which have been adopted by the commission, and so if the commission were to take the action that you've asked us to do by changing their rule, that would have the same effect, and that might be the more appropriate action.
Okay, then we'll let that be part of the process, but what we're going to do is send this to a joint committee of Wrenton Park and Public Safety. We're suspending the present law in effect, correct?
It's-- again, it's a rule.
Suspending the rule.
Yeah, and the rule, I think, could not be enforced during this time while there's a discussion.
Cannot be enforced. All right. So with that clarity, and I know Mr. Smith and Mr. Labange have talked about a joint meeting, one of the issues I'd love to see raised is the folks who walk the dogs having a license that gives them a set of responsibilities and at the same time affects us in a very positive way. I happen to believe dogs are in packs as part of the socialization of dogs. I love my dog Lulu and Rosie and all the other dogs I've had around me, and they are part of people. And I don't think dogs should be penalized, and if more than three dogs go into the park, especially with the dog handler, they're professionals and they know what they're doing. So at this point, we're doing what, Mr. City Attorney?
At this point, we would-- you're asking that the rule that more than three dogs cannot be present off-leash in a dog park be suspended while there is a discussion of making a modification or change to that rule.
Very good. And for the record, Mr. City Attorney, Dion, that's what we're just doing here, and I would ask my colleagues for a yes vote on this. Mr. President?
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl, and thank you all, colleagues, for a great discussion. Again, thank you, everybody, for taking time out of your day to be here. Let's go ahead and open the roll on the motions that are before us, as amended with the friendly amendments. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That will be approved. Thank you all very much. And-- we will let you know when we have the next hearings about that in the committees for that, so we'll let you know and be sure that you are there to be a part of making policies that moves forward. And I'm sure there's a bunch of dogs that need to be walked, so we'll see you all soon. Thank you very much. Mr. Reyes.
Can I-- can we move number four forthwith, please? Number four forthwith?
I can't--
Item number four forthwith?
Fourthwith. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't-- with the noise, I couldn't understand what with item four. Fourthwith without objection on four. And Ms. Hahn wanted to reconsider item--
Two.
Two. If we can open the roll on reconsideration of two, I'll move that. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay. Item two is back before us for Ms. Hahn. This is the Budget and Finance Committee report and ordinance, the first consideration of relative increasing the threshold for the referral of delinquent accounts. And like to recognize Ms. Hahn-- assumes she has stepped away for a moment. Any other-- Mr. Parks, is there anything you wanted to say about this? Item number two, just raise the threshold.
Ms. Hahn wanted to deal with the issue of broadening the number of RFPs that go out, people can collect the funds. I believe that issue is coming back to council somewhere mid-October.
Okay.
But there's no comment. We've dealt with this at committee, and this is a matter of just changing the process and giving more latitude with the Department of Finance. But I think that's the issue she wanted to relate was, when was that-- her motion going to be dealt with about expanding-- who she is.
Okay. Thank you for eloquently putting that out there, Mr. Parks. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. Colleagues, I just wanted to bring this back because I just have an issue about collections across the board, and I know there's a couple items that we had today about collections. I frankly am getting frustrated. Every time we are asked to write off debt, every time the debt that we have not collected seems to grow, I don't like it when we're in budget negotiations and we see $400 million gap, and yet we've got $400 million outstanding debt that we can't seem to collect. A year ago, colleagues, I brought forth the idea that why don't we expand the number of collection agencies that are currently collecting our debt? I think in these tough economic times, we have small collection agencies. I'm sure many that are based in LA, that are hungry, that would go all out to collect this debt. And so I have nothing against the large contracts that we have. I know these are national chains that are collecting our debt, but I just feel frustrated when we're still talking about layoffs and furloughs and cutting services when we have debt that we cannot seem to collect. So all I'm saying is, why can't we try something new? Why can't we try something different? Why can't we, you know, parcel off some of this debt and give-- I know-- and give to some of these agencies to try-- give it the old college try, maybe in a different way? And my father always said, "Zero from zero is zero," right? We don't have it now. We may not have it after we try this new way, but let's try something different. I think the taxpayers would appreciate us having a sense of urgency about this debt. So I would like to hear where that is. I know, maybe Bernard, you can speak to it, but I'm not feeling a sense of urgency from anybody on this. Not from anybody. If it's a city attorney, if it's Finance Department, I don't know who it is, but I will tell you, I have collection agencies that I know for a fact today would love to be given a percentage of this debt to see if they might not collect it. Who's with me on this?
This item-- your motion came before committee very recently. We sent it back because there was some concern that they wanted to merely have the new RFPs deal with what they call secondary debt. We needed that explored to find out why not the primary debt. There's over 300,000 cases that four firms are dealing with. So we hope to have that in committee on the 19th, to bring it to council before the end of this month, to expand the number of companies that can go out and collect the debt.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. You're with me on this, and you actually are, once again, trying to make my original idea even better.
That's right.
I appreciate that. I just want us to get really aggressive about this. It's money out there that is owed to us, and I know it's tough times, and we even talked about how all these collection agencies would go after it. We want it to be kinder and gentler in these tough times, but the money is owed us. It could solve some of our budget issues, and it could also create jobs in Los Angeles. These collection agencies could probably hire some extra people right now to help collect this debt. So, thank you, but let's put this on the fast track. That's the only thing I'm asking today. Let's put it on the fast track. Thank you for indulging me. It's just something I'm frustrated about. I know you do. What's next?
And we're with you. We're with you. Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. That will close the-- well, Mr. Parks, you want to be heard on this, or-- no, okay. If we can open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved again. Next order of business.
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Those are posted and referred.
There's an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused Wednesday, November 4th, for city business. That meets council policy.
All right. Ms. Hahn is excused.
That clears the desk.
Colleagues, I know Mr. Rosendahl alluded to this before, but I've always-- at least I've heard that information is knowledge, is power, and often we're asked what high school we go to around here, and other times we hear about Angels in the City of Angels, but today we celebrate Tom Labange's 56th birthday, and it gives me great pride to present to him, on behalf of the council, his own pumpkin bread-making kit. It's not made by nuns up by the Hollywood sign, but should you want to go into business, since you're a very good salesman of pumpkin bread, we want, on behalf of the entire council, to give you this pumpkin bread kit today and to wish you a very, very happy birthday to a true angel in the City of Angels, Tom Labange. Love you, man.
Happy birthday, your councilman. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you. Mr. Labange in response?
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you very much. Every day's a blessing. I thank everyone around me. I thank my parents who are up in heaven. When I was born, my mother called Mrs. O'Brien over to the house to watch my brothers, Bobby, Tim, Dennis, and Chris. Then she drove Brian and Steven to school, and she drove down Sunset Boulevard, up Coronado, to the Queen of Angels, and I was born at 8:45 on the 6th of October, 1953. And the nurse asked, "Do you want me to tell Bob," meaning her husband, "to come up and see the new baby?" And she didn't even call my dad, because she's-- back then, we had big families, you know? And I thank my parents, but I especially thank my wife, Bridgette, now, who's my great point, as well as my children and all my brothers. And I also thank my brothers and sisters of the city council and all the staff, and also the late grade John Ferraro and Tom Bradley, who along the way helped me to get here. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Do we have any adjourning motions today, colleagues? Okay, if I can ask everybody, please rise in council chambers for our adjourning motions. We could ask everybody to rise, please. Mr. Reyes.
Yeah, I was hoping we didn't overlook the announcements.
Go ahead. Yeah, one more announcement, and then we'll do adjourning--
Yeah, I just-- I know you opened today's meeting with this, but I did want to amplify that the Dodgers did win the national Western Division Champions. They are the champions, and they are seeking to be divisional champions against the Cardinals beginning tomorrow. Hopefully, they can win the pennant and eventually be the world champs. So congratulations to the McCord Foundation organization, their leadership, and more importantly, the hope and the great feeling of this to be in Los Angeles through these great achievements. So thank you very much, Dodgers.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, and maybe we'll even get a freeway series out of this with that other Los Angeles team. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, adjourning motions, please, Mr. President, and if I could start with Roy Hefner, an amazing constituent from Westchester. Roy was an elder statesman of Westchester. He was a teacher and an active member of the Westchester community since he moved in the area in 1954. Roy served as a well-respected teacher during a 33-year teaching career at Orville Wright Middle School, Westchester High School, and Venice Adult School, where he taught history, physical education, and citizenship classes. In addition, Roy took an active role in a wide array of community organizations. He was a charter member of the LAX Advisory Committee. Denny Snyder just can't say enough about the leadership that Roy provided. He served for 32 years as a charter member of the Noyes Roundtable. He helped develop the community alternative for the LAX Master Plan. For 23 years, Roy was the announcer for the annual Jet to Jetty 5K/10K Run Walk, which raised funds for Airport Marina Counseling Service, a private nonprofit outpatient mental health clinic serving the LAX area. Roy served as a Boy Scout advisor, a Neighborhood Watch Leader, member of the Westchester Family YMCA Board of Managers, and past president of the Westchester American Little League Baseball. Roy also served as a member of the Board of Directors for such organizations as the Kentwood Home Guardians, the Westchester Playa del Rey Historical Society, the Flight Path Learning Center of Southern California. Roy was also one of the original crafters of the Neighborhood Council of Westchester Playa del Rey, spending many months crafting the bylaws and details necessary to bring these two communities into a citywide neighborhood council system. He also had the honor of presiding over its first election. Roy was honored by many organizations throughout the years, including earning a Chamber of Commerce Teacher of the Year Award while a teacher at Orville Wright, and the Citizen of the Year Award from the Airport Lions Club. Roy passed away last Friday with his right wife, Niva, 59 years by his side. In addition to his wife, Roy is survived by his son and daughter, along with numerous members of his extended family. A public memorial service will be held at the Covenant Presbyterian Church in Westchester on Saturday, October 17, at 1:00 p.m. May he rest in peace. And, Mr. President, I also have another adjourning motion that I know--
Sure, we'll second that, Ms. Hahn.
Ms. Hahn, second that? Great. Has to do with someone we all know very dearly, and that's Nancy M. Daly. The public services are pending, and we'll know about it shortly, but her name was Nancy McNeil, and she was born June 11, 1941, in Tenerfield, New Jersey, and she went to St. Cecilia High School, as I did. I'm in Englewood, right next door. We didn't know that, though, until way later in life that we went to the same school. She met Bob Daly while she was secretary at CBS. The two married in 1961. The Daly's started a family with the birth of their daughter Linda in 1966, and sons Bobby and Brian followed. The couple moved to California from New Jersey in 1978, where Bob accepted a new position as president of CBS Entertainment Division. Daly established herself as one of Los Angeles' most prominent and energetic activists on behalf of neglected and abused children after visiting the McClain Children's Center, McClarian, the since-closed Los Angeles County Emergency Foster Facility, which would lead to much-- to much broader involvement in children's issues. I might say I saw her in the lobby of a hotel in Sacramento as an advocate, talking about legislation, getting engaged in it. It was amazing. This dismal prison-like setting she saw on her first visit in 1979 galvanized daily to harness her considerable Hollywood contacts to raise money for and awareness of the county's neediest children. In 1984, she successfully lobbied for the creation of what is now the County Department of Children and Family Services, and served on its advisory commission from the department's founding until 1999. In 1989, she was appointed to the Nonpartisan President's Commission on Children, which recommended federal government policy reform. She met Richard Reardon in the late 1980s, and when she asked him to help pay for a computer reading lab for McLaren, a couple of years later, she called on Reardon again, and this time to help bankroll an immunization program for children of low-income families. Nancy filed for divorce in 1971, and Reardon, who was separated from his second wife, invited the children's activists to a Christmas holiday party at Union Station. They soon became a couple, but did not marry until 1998. When Reardon was elected mayor in 1993, he appointed Nancy to a new city commission on children and families. During this time, Nancy also oversaw the privately-funded restoration of the Getty House. In 2003, she co-chaired with former Assembly Speaker Bob Hertzberg a committee to oversee the spending of tobacco tax funds to help provide preschool for all four-year-olds in the county. Nancy has been battling pancreatic cancer. In fact, we had her here, colleagues, and awarded her an award for her incredible leadership and working on that issue. She died Friday at the age of 68 in St. Louis while traveling back to Los Angeles from New York in a motorhome with her three adult children. I might say that when I spoke to her a few weeks ago, she said those three children are the darlings of her life, and for her to be with them at that very moment is a blessing, I'm sure. Besides her three children, she's survived by five grandchildren, and the public funeral is pending. But you know, when they were coming across the country, Bobby, her son, said, "It's not about the journey, it's about the journey, not the destination," was his line. And then Brian summed it all up after his mother passed and said, "Energy is neither created or destroyed, it just shifts. All mom's powerful energy will flow into everyone she touched. We will carry her with us forever." May she rest in peace.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labonge, Ms. Hahn, do you want to?
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. I know how close you were to Nancy and how special she was, members in, working for Mr. Reardon and seeing her work, first in developing the focus on children and youth and their families in this city hall and combining that effort, and also other works, working for the county, interest for McLaren Hall and other facilities for children who are foster children. She really is an angel in the City of Angels, absolutely. She is a saint, and she did a very gallant fight to try to beat this horrible cancer that she received. She also, I just want to let you know, was so eloquently honored by the Los Angeles County Art Museum recently, where Maria Shriver spoke about her in such a powerful way. And when you hear that about someone who makes a difference in the lives, you know she's very special. It's a tragedy that she went so early, but it's a greatness that she was here for all to touch her. And so many people who are touched by her didn't know her, which is really the true compliment to someone who serves others. God bless Nancy Daly. I ask all members, and I ask all members, sign a Creative Services Special Proclamation of German.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. I just wanted to also just add my tribute to a great woman who lived a great life. Certainly, it was too short, and she left us too early. And Bill, I do know how close you two were, and you talked about some of the conversations you've had with her in recent months, and really, until the end, she was a strong, brave, courageous lady. Pancreatic cancer is a horrible, horrible disease. Just took Patrick Swayze, it's what my own father died of, and I remember so well speaking to her when she was in council, because she, of course, loved my dad, too, and they worked very close together in the county. He was there when they created the department and worked with her very closely. There was no one in the county, or dare I say anywhere, that was such an advocate for children, just pure and simple. She was an advocate for children. Wherever they found themselves in their lives and their situations, she stood up for them. She wanted to make sure that the county was really bending its resources toward their young lives, particularly if they found themselves in our juvenile justice system or in our foster care system. She was an advocate for children. What a great, great lady, what a courageous lady. And she will be missed from Los Angeles County, but she certainly left an incredible legacy for kids, and as you said, many young people will benefit from what she did, but may never have had the opportunity to know her or meet her. Rest in peace, Nancy Daly.
Mr. Reyes, and then Mr. Riza.
Thank you, Council President. As a student in the 80s, late, early 80s, there were a group of UCLA students that used to go to McLaren Hall, and we used to go there and visit, and, I only did it once, but there was a group of students that went continuously on a program. And little did I know that it was Ms. Daly who was actually the reason why we had that opportunity. And to see the type of changes and expressions of these children, of this youth, that felt abandoned if it not were for Ms. Daly. So, fast forward years later, you begin to connect the dots on how people impact lives, and she's one of those persons that I just never understood the enormity of her contribution. But if you would have seen these kids' faces, it's just something that you just, you can't put a dollar to it, it's hard to express what it means, and it's just sad that we don't have more Ms. Dalys, because those kids are still there. There's still foster care facilities that need that attention, and it doesn't exist. So, I want to thank you for those moments of happiness for all those children and for all the students, at least from UCLA, who benefited from having that relationship and working with these children. So, God bless them.
Thank you. Mr. Riza.
President, thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, for sharing with us, Ms. Nancy's work, and when my wife and I heard about this, we were deeply saddened. My wife, of course, worked for 10 years here for the Commission for Children, Youth, and Families, and she mentioned to me, when somebody thought of children and how to help our children here in the county and the city, you thought about Nancy. And my wife certainly looked up to her and was a role model for her about what can be done. When one person stands up and says, "We're going to do something for our children," and certainly our commission here probably wouldn't be what it is, probably wouldn't have done the work it did if it wasn't for Nancy, who took a recommendation from a report and said, "We're going to do this, we're going to establish this," and that's just but one small example of the work she did for our children. So, we're certainly saddened, and as our good friend mentioned, our colleague, Tom, that, you know, there's going to be a lot of people who benefit because of Nancy's work that we're not even aware of. So, our condolences to her family and our condolences to all the city and county of Los Angeles.
Thank you, and thank you so much for keeping us in the loop, Mr. Rosendahl, as you cared for her as well, and in her last weeks and last months as well. I grew up with Brian and Bobby, and they're friends of mine growing up, and I know that they both served their mother so well, and she was so proud of them, and so I know with the entire family, our thoughts are with them. So, we'll put all members on that, and are there any other adjourning motions? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I ask that we adjourn in memory of Michael E. Lewis, who passed away at 62 in Scottsdale, Arizona. Can you tell you a little bit of story about Mike, because he was my closest friend in high school? And some of you people don't know about me, actually, is, in 1966, I was actually a drummer in a rock and roll band. And Mike Lewis was a guitar player in another band called The New Breed. They lost their drummer, they asked me if I was interested, and I said, "Actually, I'm not good enough for you guys, there's another guy I know who's better. I think you ought to interview him." And they actually hired him, and they said, "You know, that took a lot of guts, we appreciate that, would you be our manager?" So I became the manager of a group called The New Breed. During the course of 1966 and 67, we had a lot of good jobs, and I got to know a guy named Richard Potter, who produced records for The Rolling Stones, for Steppenwolf, had another little group that, he said, "This group is going to be huge, you ought to see them." So I went to the Whiskey Gogo and saw them with Mike. I assigned him that night to do a concert, and I went out and hired The Standells, who was a fairly well-known group at the time, to do a concert with this other group and my group, to be an introduction for my group, to be really well-known. Two months before my concert, the group introduced their first record, a group song called Break On Through, and a month later, they introduced their biggest hit, Light My Fire. And I produced in 1968 a Doors concert, but I had to take my band off the bill because I had the Doors, I didn't really need my band, unfortunately. But nonetheless, it put me in contact with people in Hollywood, and we went on to sign a contract with RCA Decca, and Mike Lewis got busy writing six beautiful songs for The New Breed. We went into the studios, it's over a place now not there anymore, over on Ventura Boulevard in Studio City, and recorded six songs for Decca Records, which I fortunately still have. In July, Mike was drafted in the Army along with our organ player, and I decided that the band was dead, and I enlisted in the Air Force, and we had a big blowout party in October of 68, and never saw each other again for 30 years. Two years ago, one of the band members saw me interviewed on television, my job here in the city council, called up and said, "Are you the same Greg I know from The New Breed?" We got together, we went on an extensive search, we found all the original band except for one who had passed away, and we had a reunion party a year and a half ago, and had an opportunity to get together with Mike again and play our six songs that nobody had heard for 30 years. And so in a way, God played a big role in bringing us back together, I think, before God took him from us. He died on Sunday from a massive stroke. He was a dear friend. God bless Mike.
My condolences. Mr. Parks.
Mr. President, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Laura Mae Gross, who was born in Mississippi in 1920, moved to the West Coast in about 1945, where she opened a blues club in the Los Angeles area. She passed away on October 3rd of heart failure at the age of 89. She was known as Mama. She opened a club called Babes and Ricky on Central Avenue in 1964, and later moved that club to the Crenshaw area in Lamert Park. Club was named after her son and nephew. She continued that effort and became a cornerstone for many new blues artists who came there and performed routinely. She, in the Crenshaw area, again, on Lamert Boulevard is where her club currently stands, and her partner, Mr. Hopson, is the one that continued, will continue the process of keeping the club open. In fact, she had her annual birthday party recently, it was first time in well over 20 years she was unable to attend very recently because she was in a hospice. Her funeral arrangements are at 1:00, October 17th, at the Inglewood Park Cemetery on East Florence Avenue.
Thank you very much. Are there any other adjourning motions? If not, Mr. Clerk, would please call the roll. Will next be in session tomorrow, that's October 7th, Wednesday, at 10:00 AM. Have a great day. Until then, this meeting of the Los Angeles City